We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Puniet?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here. And we will now have our flag salute. Please come forward.
Heligard, prepare to advance. Advance. Heligard, prepare to post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heligard, post colors. Heligard salute. Heligard regroup. Heligard, this is next.
Thank you. That's Boy Scout Troop Number 262, and thank you very much. We'll now have our invocation by Shauna Segundo from the Bahai Faith. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Oh my God, oh my God. Unite the hearts of thy servants and reveal to them thy great purpose. May they follow thy commandments and abide in thy law. Help them, oh God, in their endeavor and grant them strength to serve thee. Oh God, leave them not to themselves but guide their steps by the light of thy knowledge and cheer their hearts by thy love. Verily thou art their helper and their Lord.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation, and this will go to Henry Sanchez. If you please come forward. And it's a proclamation from the city of Palm Springs, and it is for alcohol awareness. And it says, "Whereas alcohol is a factor in the four leading causes of death among persons ages ten through twenty-four: motor vehicle crashes, unintentional injuries, homicide, and suicide. And approximately 9.7 million current drinkers in the United States are between the ages of twelve through twenty. And alcohol is the most frequently used drug by high school seniors. And whereas young people begin drinking on average at age thirteen point one years of life. And young people who begin drinking before age fifteen are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at the age of twenty-one. And whereas alcohol abuse is linked to as many as two-thirds of all sexual assaults and date rapes of teens and college students, and is a major factor in unprotected sex among youth, increasing the risk of contracting HIV and other transmitted diseases. And the typical American youth will see 100,000 beer commercials before he or she turns eighteen. That is more than for sneakers, gum, and that is more than for sneakers, gum, and/or jeans. And whereas 13 percent of all youth ages twelve through seventeen had at least one serious problem related to drinking in the past year, now therefore I run out and do by here proclaim April 2004 to be Alcohol Awareness Month." Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Would you come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. On behalf of the ABC Club, the Board of Directors, the management, the staff, the residents, and the alumni, we want to thank you for acknowledging the month of August, of April, as Alcohol Awareness Month. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Report on the posting of the agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you have before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, April the second. The council has before them tonight additional materials for Item 3, 5, and 22. Additionally, the public gave me additional materials for Item 13 and 18. Those were placed on top of your yellow packets. The city manager is withdrawing tonight Items CRA-A, Item Number 16, Item Number 17, and Item Number 20. So that would be withdrawing CRA-A, 16, 17, and 20.
Okay.
Additionally, if you'll note on the agenda, Item CRA-B, the original contract should be for $36,583, not $236,583. It was a typographical error.
Would you say that again, please?
On CRA-B, on the agenda portion, I put the number as 236,583. The two should not be there, it should be 36,583.
Okay. All right. Are there any other corrections? Closed session report?
Yes, the council and agency met in closed session. The items on the closed session agenda. The real property negotiations with VIP, the out item was not discussed, the Gabe item was not discussed, the Swank matter was not discussed, the Winter item was not discussed, the Westman item was not discussed. For the city, real property negotiations, the DWA item was not discussed, the Greyhound lines item was not discussed, Palm Springs Townhomes was not discussed, Stitch was not discussed, Bernard Diamond was not discussed, the labor negotiations, we gave a SaaS report concerning negotiations, direction was given for further negotiations. Concerning the exposure to litigation, we discussed the exposure to litigation in two cases, no action was taken, and the city attorney evaluation was not conducted.
Okay. Thank you. The Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority have no business. We will adjourn as the city council and convene as the Finance Authority. First item under Finance Authority is approval of the minutes of June 18, 2003.
I'll move the approval of the minutes.
And I will second that with... We only have two members of the current council who were present at that time.
It's a matter of practice for council members not to vote for minutes that they were not there at, but it's not technically required. I mean, you're approving that those are the minutes of the entity.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? His query. If there are any public comments for the Finance Authority, please come forward at this time, you'll have three minutes, and that's just for the Finance Authority. If not, then we will move to our first item on the Agenda Convention Center Expansion Phase II 2004 Series, Aid Lease Revenue Bonds. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency. What we have before you is the request for the authorization for the sale of the bonds for the expansion of the Convention Center. We have with us this evening Suzanne Harold, our bond advisor. She is here. Mr. Canar, our finance director, will give you a staff report, and he will introduce or bring Suzanne up at the appropriate time, and she will be available for your questions. Thank you.
Mr. Canar.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, Mr. Mayor, members of the Financing Authority. The action before you is to approve a number of documents that would approve the sale of not to exceed $65 million of lease revenue bonds for the expansion of the Convention Center and also for refinancing of the 1997 bonds on the Convention Center, some existing bonds. The proposed bond issue would finance approximately 117,000 square foot expansion of the Convention Center. I apologize, my staff report says 93,000. The actual project cost will be about $44.9 million. The refinancing of the 97 bonds is about $11 million, and the rest of the cost of the total up to somewhere not to exceed 65 million is the debt service reserve, capitalized interest, and bond insurance, and the cost of issuance. The net interest cost that we expect to get on the bonds, the average cost of the entire bond issue, is about 4.4 percent, and the bonds will be repaid from the additional transient occupancy tax that was increased, went into effect on January 1, 2002, and January 1, 2004. There's a companion item on your agenda for the city action. It adopts all of the various resolutions and ordinances from the city side, and with that, if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And I don't know if Suzanne is in the audience, if there's any questions about the financing.
Counsel? Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wonder if Ms. Harold could come and just give us a brief synopsis of timing and where we go from this point, since she drove all the way down here.
Good evening, Ms. Harold. You'll have three...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item before you is a resolution of the Financing Authority. As Mr. Canar mentioned, you have a companion item on the city council agenda. The financing, once those documents are approved, the financing can basically take place within 30 days, and you'll have your funding, we expect, by sometime around May 19.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, then counsel?
Move the resolution.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember McCullough. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Puniet?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It passes unanimously, and we will adjourn as the Financing Authority and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. And the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of March 17.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was, did not attend that meeting, so I will be abstaining.
Okay, we have counsel? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor? I have a, sort of like, find the minutes.
Above A.
Okay, on page two of the first part where it says motion to continue the item to March 21st, I would like that to show the vote.
I could make that correction, Ms. Vogt, administratively, if the council chooses to go ahead and approve them, the minutes.
Okay, yes. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Good.
Seconded by Mr. Puniet. All in favor, I'd be known by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions? Okay, one abstention carries 401.
401.
401, yes. Okay. Forget your O, I'm the O. All right, and we will now, there are no public hearings, we'll move to public comments, three minutes. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Community Redevelopment Agency, if there's anyone who would like to speak to the Community Redevelopment Agency, please come forward at this time. I don't have any cards for the Community Redevelopment Agency. Then we will move on to our legislative items. Item A has been removed, that's the property purchase of the Francis Winter property, and we'll move to Item B under CRA, which is South Palm Canyon at Sunny Dunes Medias. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency. This is a redevelopment agency incentive. It was for the new KFC on South Palm Canyon. The former building was demolished, there was a vacant lot there, and this paves the way for a much nicer building. And also, I would note that the Planning Commission did approve this as well. Actually, there are two things here. One is actually approving the contract for the construction of the median on South Palm Canyon, and then for the additional maintenance for the landscaping of that median. David Bracken, Director of Public Works, can give you more detailed information or answer any specific questions. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mills?
I'd first like to thank engineering staff for going back and getting this thing landscaped, and appreciate the effort, and I think we'll all say enough yet from it, and really a major improvement to that intersection, which has always been a disaster. So I would move both resolutions, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion?
Second.
The second by Councilmember Puniet. Are there any additional questions? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Puniet?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It passes unanimously. And we'll move to Item C, acquisition of parcels, Desert Highland Gateway area. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency. In 2002, you approved the Desert Highland infill program. This is part of that program. We're asking for two actions here. First is the ability to negotiate for three properties for infill housing, and the second is with regard to obtaining from the County Riverside a swap on tax lien for two additional properties, for a total of five properties. John Raymond, Director of Community and Economic Development, can answer any specific questions. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, are there any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Raymond, where did you... This, it mentions in the staff report that the reason that the requested amount of, the requested amount from the county was so high was something to do with the, with liens that the city had on these properties, is that correct?
In both cases, the properties were abatement properties, and so there was the legal costs of going through the abatement, and then the actual demolition and structure. So they're empty lots now, but our normal course of business is to go and put that on the tax roll. So in the case of the property that's, you know, 53,000, the city lien, I believe, is about half of that, about $26,000.
So if you were to take the liens off, is the property value that, with the liens off, a fair price on an appraisal standpoint?
There, we're having five additional lots that we're looking to acquire from CVHC Appraisers right now. We have run sales consult on lots in Desert Highland now, and the lots are going for about 20,000. So if you're acquiring the one that's at 21, 22, and the other one minus the, minus the lien at, you know, the lien value of 25, it's a little bit, a little bit higher, but it's not significantly higher.
And the, and what funds were used for the abatement?
Those are city funds through the code enforcement, abatement, and so that's not, that was not an agency action. We didn't use our money to do it, and so ordinarily, when that's recovered, property sells, and somebody has to clear up that lien on their tax roll, the city's paid back for that, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if they put it back in the, in an abatement fund, or if it just goes back in the general fund.
That's really where I'm going, to find out where it goes.
Well, what I, what I put in the staff report is I'd like the city to put it in a little fund that we could use for additional abatement, but I can't guarantee that, that the city, you know, the city, they will take the money and do what I want them to do with it. They might just put it back in the general.
How unusual. We have that problem, too. Thank you. That explains it.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the two resolutions.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Mills.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Vogt. Are there any additional questions? Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Puniet?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It passes unanimously, and we will adjourn as the Community Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the city council. So we will open it up for public comment. You will have three minutes, and the first name that I have is Michael Stern. Please come forward. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening to you. My name is Michael Stern, and I live here in Palm Springs. Tonight, I'm not going to address any specific agenda items. I simply want to talk about the soul of our city. I came to Palm Springs from an unfortunate place. I watched the towers of the World Trade Center crumble. I didn't watch it from my windows, I mean, I didn't, pardon me, I didn't watch it on CNN, I watched it through my windows. I saw the real deal happening just five blocks away, and it rocked our building like a severe earthquake. I came to Palm Springs, and it nourished my soul. It is my personal legacy to honor that debt. We all love Palm Springs. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. And you want to tell, do you want me to tell you why we love it so? It's because Palm Springs got soul. Those exact words were stated so eloquently by a stranger I met at the Village Pub. Despite the flawed grammar, she hit the nail on the head. That's it. Palm Springs got soul. And that's a rare and precious commodity these days. You drive around California, across America, and it's all turning into the same thing. You practically can't tell one town from the next. But that's not true here. When you come to Palm Springs, you know you're in Palm Springs, at least for now, you still do. We need to honor that. We need to protect that. That, council members, Mayor Oden, David Ready, Doug Evans, and everyone else, that is your legacy to the city and your obligation to the city, to protect that soul. I understand that everybody needs a paycheck. Palm Springs needs a paycheck because it has some serious bills to pay, but we can't pay those bills at the expense of Palm Springs' soul. That's too expensive. Look down Valley, and you'll see bland California any towns. Go to La Quinta, and you'll basically see one big tract house. We don't want that here, and we don't need to do that for Palm Springs to survive. We can't afford to do that, because if we lose our soul here, it is gone forever. Don't think that I'm anti-development, because I'm not. I understand that if you're not moving forward, you're moving backwards, and I believe in progress. But I believe in progress and development that understands the soul of what makes our city unique. This is a very exciting time to be part of the Palm Springs community. We're clearly poised for change, and that has the potential to be a positive change for... for generations to come. Members of the council, and Mayor Oden, I cannot implore you enough in every decision that you make to honor the gifts that have been bestowed upon us. Remember, if Palm Springs loses its soul, it is gone forever, and I do mean forever. Let's not make that your legacy. Thank you, and good night.
And thank you. Noel Pittman. Followed by Linda Schwartz.
Your Honor?
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, esteemed council. I am Noel Pittman, and I'm a resident and homeowner in Palm Springs for the last fifteen years. This is a non-agenda item. I'm proud to announce the formation of the Tai Chi Education and Research Institute, a public service program of the Partnership to Preserve Independent Living, an exempt 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded in 1987. I wish to inform you how the desert community will benefit from its creation, and to ask the community for support in our efforts in finding funding for this nonprofit organization. Tai Chi Chuan is a slow-moving, graceful exercise practiced for over a thousand years in China. Its twenty-minute routine performed twice daily provides many benefits to desert residents, including increased strength, stamina, improved cardiovascular and immune system function, a tonic for every organ and glandular system, and greatly improved balance and coordination. Recent medical studies reported that by the National Institute on the Age, concluded that seniors who practice Tai Chi are able to prevent serious injury due to falls by fifty percent. Week after week, I am finding new Western medical studies that provide proof that Tai Chi can improve prognosis of practitioners suffering from a vast number of medical syndromes. On a personal note, I also had polio when I was twenty-one months old, and I was always told by the doctors that by the time I was twenty-eight, I can expect to be back in a wheelchair due to post-polio syndrome and arthritis, and that was about, was about thirteen years ago. I beat the odds. Tai Chi is aggressive tool for non, violent tool for overcoming all forms of adversity. Our mission is to preserve independent living by improving the health of seniors, persons with disabilities, and anyone wishing to maintain and increase their health through Tai Chi Chuan and Chi Gak. We accomplish this by providing classes and associated with senior centers and with the Arthritis Foundation. I have taught Tai Chi classes here in the Coachella Valley for the last thirteen years on a grassroots level, but now that the institute is under the umbrella of the partnership, we need to expand our services to help those in need. In that most seniors and disabled are low-income and of fixed income, we are, cannot sustain services by tuition alone, and therefore, we're seeking out grants and corporate sponsorships. However, these will take many months to put into place. I am actively seeking help from the community's businesses and leaders to provide vital service for this interim startup period, and by making a tax deduction, deductible donation, or by placing a business logo on a T-shirt that we were developing. I thank the council for your citation and recognition of World Tai Chi Day, to be held in conjunction with Earth Day Celebration at ten o'clock at the Living Desert on the twenty-fourth, and I ask for your support and blessing as I go door-to-door asking for donations. Thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could you ask him where, how anybody would get information?
Yes, how would anyone get any information?
We have a website established, PS, Palm Springs, PSTiChi.com, and the phone number is seven six zero three two five nine three eight four.
Thank you. Linda Schwartz, followed by Sergio Santos. Good evening and welcome, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable councilmembers. My name is Linda Schwartz. In nineteen ninety-seven, I moved to Palm Springs and met my next-door neighbor, Phyllis Silver, who befriended me in nineteen ninety-seven. She is the owner of Tony's Pasta Mia, a restaurant here in town I believe everybody is aware of. After several conversations with the Silver family regarding their plans to take their roller hockey team public with the Nasdaq Stock Exchange, I was visited at my home by Ms. Silver and her family capital investment banker, Robert Cashman, and several associates of his. I invested a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for which I received stock certificates and the collateral guarantee that assured me the ownership of the roller hockey team, including merchandise rights. The Silver Family Enterprise did not go public with their company despite the efforts of her family and their aggressive approach to sell shares of stocks to the public. The Silvers claim to have fallen short of their goal to raise the required two million dollars by the Securities Exchange Commission. In nineteen ninety-nine, the Silver Family Enterprise filed bankruptcy protection in the city of Santa Ana, California. The bankruptcy protection that the Silver Family Enterprise filed for did not include not one of the stockholders as the corporation which we all thought owned the roller hockey team, was never included in any of the bankruptcy proceedings. I have filed a civil complaint against the Silver Family and Phyllis Silver of Tony's Pasta Mia in the Superior Court of Indio, California. The Silver Family is responsible for the reimbursement of my money, and that money belonging to hundreds of victims who were lured by grandiose dreams that their investment would double once the company completed their already-approved public offering with the Securities Exchange Commission. I am here in hopes that if anyone is aware of any additional victims, or has fallen prey to the Silver Family Enterprises and their false promises, that he or she contact myself or my attorney, John Gallegos of Indian Wells, at area code seven six oh three two oh nine six nine eight. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Sergio? Good evening and welcome, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This is not on the agenda tonight, as we all know, but Mr. Evans, at the last meeting when we went ahead with the advertising on taxis thing, wanted recommendations for the changing of the advertising on taxi ordinances. Those have been delivered to you along with the contract, these two documents, which you all have now. The reason I'm here tonight is that this started back in March of two thousand and three, it's been thirteen months. I've got a hundred and thirty taxis in the next ten days that are putting advertising toppers on their cars, and basically, what I need to ask you, this industry has been losing eighty thousand dollars a month. After talking to Doug tonight, he's told me that this process can go on for months and months and months. From what I understand, there's a, some kind of emergency vote the council can do to bypass this and maybe give a temporary okay for the advertising to start, because, like I said, these guys have lost a lot of money, and this could just go on, they've already, for the most part, lost this season, so I guess what I'm asking is if the council could do something with the ordinance that now exists while this is being worked, while the ordinances are being changed. And on this contract, I would like, on this document right here for the ordinance change, I would just like to let you all know that that, on section D two, it says franchise fee, that should say regulatory fee, and that goes hand-in-hand with the contract that our attorney, Mr. Kaiser, drafted up. And I understand this has to go through the city attorney and everything else, but these guys are hurting, and we were shooting for May one as the starting date for advertising, so anything you could do, we, you know, we wish, we want, we work hand-in-hand with you with this new city council, and if there's anything you can do to do a temporary, whatever you call it, to give us the opportunity to start advertising, and that would be deeply appreciated by three hundred drivers and their families, and they all got soul, so thank you very much.
Okay, everybody's got soul. Sheila Tollford. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, guys, how are you? I just wanted to, I left you folks in your box about a month ago, our final proposal, and I left one up for you for tonight, and I again wanted to bring up the issue of the price of the land, because I know hopefully we'll get that issue settled tonight, so again, I want to bring up, there has been some things overlooked in our community, and we're hoping again that tonight, when you guys make a decision, that you consider these things again. I just wanted to reiterate that and say thank you for all the time you've given us the last six months, and the city also. Thank you.
And thank you. And Shirley Bush. Good evening, Shirley, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Last July, the City Council unanimously voted to remove the resale restrictions. When Dana Hodges cast her vote, she said, "It's really hard for me to understand how a city for twenty years did not know what the hell it's doing. I'm just interested in the last one to five years." Last March, Mr. Raymond said he's been trying to remove these restrictions for five years. If he would have complied with the provisions set forth in the recorded CCNRs, the restrictions could have been removed some time ago. Instead of complying with these provisions, staff tried to alter them and came up with a few proposals which would have been an administrative burden. The lease extension should have been addressed several years ago. Staff was aware for several years that owners could not obtain thirty-year financing, and were paying plus or minus one hundred dollars per month for twenty-year loans. Staff has been aware for several years that title has been improperly conveyed of six parcels. Now staff reports that there may be twenty-five properties, which equates to fifty percent of Sunrise Norte, that have improper vesting. Per Mr. Reddy, Sunrise Norte is not a part of the city's affordable inventory, and removing the restrictions will not have a negative effect. City's recommendation is not only to remove, is to not remove the restrictions, only if an owner purchases lot. One, if only a portion of Sunrise Norte is under the restrictions, it creates a very inequitable situation. The inconsistencies of enforcing the restrictions created a very hostile atmosphere in Quail Point and Desert Dorado. If removing the restriction causes values to increase, then please do not deprive an owner the chance to make a profit from their real estate. Don't penalize an owner if he does not have the financial means at this time to purchase his lot. A typical appraisal, a home vacant lot condo, three hundred dollars, twelve pages, five-day turnaround. An appraisal for market value, a lot with an existing structure, as Sunrise Norte, not just a vacant lot, sixty-one pages, fifteen thousand dollars, two-month turnaround. Keep it simple, keep it simple, keep it consistent. Increased lot prices by CPI with five percent cap per year. Unknown dollar amounts in the future can create a negative effect. There are fifty homes, North Walehill, Satermino, Lugo, Tsero, etc. Two years ago, these lots with an existing structure were appraised, they were to have a lease increase of seven percent of market value of the lots. Two years later, they are still in litigation. My opinions are based on my twenty years of real estate involvement in these four tracts. Also, the appraisal was done from Escondido. Whenever possible, let's support our local businesses. Thank you.
And thank you. Those are all of the cards that I have. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, I ask you please come forward at this time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Derek Powell, and I travel a lot around the valley, I just came back from a trip to Northern California. I don't know if anything can be done about this, but maybe you are aware that gas prices in this town range from seven to twenty cents more than Cathedral City, Rancho Mirage, Palm Desert. I don't understand why a Chevron station is selling gas for two twenty-nine here and two nineteen just across the border in Cathedral City. Maybe somebody could do something about that. Thank you.
And thank you. Okay, I see two more speakers. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak in public comments, please get in the line at this point in time, if not, these will be our last two speakers. Thank you, good evening, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, and, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. I just asked them before this evening, just to encourage you to continue the progress of the expansion of the Palm Springs Convention Center. We had identified about five groups that due to delays from construction last year, we identified five groups, a total of ten thousand twenty-five room nights, and also had an economic value of six point seven million dollars. These groups, right now, have either canceled their business with us, or we're looking to rebook them at another time, and another one, we're still working with to try to salvage. There are also a number of other groups out there that aren't even looking at us right now, because they're not so sure that this convention center project is actually going to happen. It's been a long two and a half years. You know, we increased the TOT in two thousand and two, and then again in two thousand and three. Now, this TOT is monies that are being raised from visitors to Palm Springs, not by the residents here in our community. Let's not stop the progress of Palm Springs Convention Center, let's not stop the progress of our community, our downtown businesses need it. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council, mayor, and staff. My name is Charlie Robles, I'm co-owner of the Caliente Tropics, and also general manager of La Parca Meridian, where we are investing about twenty million dollars this year. I sit on the board of Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association, and I've been asked to read a letter on behalf of Mary Jo Ginther, general manager of the Hyatt Regency Suites Palm Springs, and president of the PHHA. Approximately ninety percent of the TOT generated in the city of Palm Springs is represented by the PSHA. We stand firmly in support of the expansion of the convention center, and urge you this evening to continue to move this process forward without delay. As other large hotels and convention centers around the country have continued to expand, conventions and groups have passed us by in search of these larger venues. In this situation, it is not an option to maintain the status quo. This will cause us to lose more market share than we already have lost. In this case, it would also create a larger budget deficit, as the TOT, sales tax, and retail spending will also all diminish. We are continuing to lose market share, and this loss will not only become greater, it will become greater if we delay any longer. As the manager of the Hyatt, she shares these comments. Even though we rely mainly on individual Hyatt travelers, the citywide conventions increase the demand throughout the city, allowing us to book midweek guest rooms and demand higher room rates when conventions are here. Despite having a strong and recognizable brand name such as Hyatt, the hotel cannot succeed alone on this, there's simply not enough demand. The citywides booked at the convention center provide our hotel with the additional revenues needed to run a viable, profitable business. Citywide's increase business during time periods in which our individual Hyatt guest typically does not travel to the desert. The convention center's business is essential for this hotel. The most difficult part of being a general manager is telling a housekeeper, a front-office agent, or a bellman that we cannot provide them with work because our business demand is not there. Without convention business, I cannot adequately provide for them. This may not seem significant with a hundred and ninety-three rooms, but when you factor in the number of businesses that are dependent on tourism, you can understand why the convention center is so necessary. Thank you for your continued support of tourism in Palm Springs. Good evening.
And thank you. And we will close our public comments. And we will move to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Vogt?
I would like to pull item number six from the consent agenda, and actually, from this evening's discussions, I think this is a, an item which needs to be discussed as we discuss budget cutbacks, and so I would like to see that on a future agenda.
Okay, that's fine. Are there any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item number nine for a question of staff, please.
If you just have a question? If you just have a question, or do you want to pull separately?
It is just a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I noticed in the staff report that this was subject to conditions, the conditions approved were subject to a council meeting of October 15, 2003. So my question is, what were those conditions, and have they been met?
Councilman, I would ask David Breckin, our city engineer, to come to the microphone, and he can address that issue. Thank you.
Yes, the conditions have been met. There were probably, thank you, there were probably about four or five pages of them, and they were the conditions that were applied to the tentative parcel map. And this is the final parcel map, which has now met those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain on abstain on number one, in that I again was not at the March 17 meeting. Along with Ms. Vogt, I would like to pull six. I don't know if we have to pull six for a vote to table or what, but anyway, let's just settle for pulling six right now. And number nine, I will be abstaining on for business purposes. And number 11, I have two warrants to abstain on. 995-346 and 47 for business reasons.
Okay, then at this time, we will entertain a motion for the consent agenda minus item number six.
I move that, Mr. Mayor.
Move by Ms. Vogt. Your second?
Second, then.
By Mr. Pugnay. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes unanimously. And on item number six, do we need to take a vote, or do we just vote that into our budget discussion?
It will be, I withdraw it, Mayor, and I will bring that discussion back during the budget discussions next month.
Thank you. There's no extended consent agenda, and we'll move to our public hearing. Item number 12, Rothbard Development Destination Ramon LLC. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this hearing, we are asking that you move it to our next meeting, and we're going to ask that meeting to actually be on the 14th of April. The applicant has made this request, and there's no significant impact to doing so. Thank you.
Okay, then I will, are there any questions on that staff report, please?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. I would like to include in this, in the public notice of this, that this is the proposed Walmart location. It does not indicate that in any of the, in any of the public notices that we have out.
That is true. On that, the information that was sent out, does it say in anything that it was actually Walmart?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant drives the nomenclature, if you will, in the notices, but I would ask Mr. Evans to give you a more complete answer. Thank you.
The notices, the public hearing notices have already gone out for this meeting, and they would be in effect for next meeting because you're going to continue, so we would not notice. What we will do is work with the city clerk to put it on the agenda for next week. Destination Ramon slash Walmart, and we'll revise our staff report to reference the retailer as Walmart.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one. In our information, and I know the item is continued, I did not have the conditions of approval. And I don't know if they weren't in there because we didn't, because it was going to be continued, but next time I would sure like to have them in there.
Yeah, we will give the council members and the public the full staff report. It's already done and sitting in the city clerk's office.
How does it look in there?
It's about that thick.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Mr. Mayor, could we have that report prior to the April 14 meeting, so we have a chance to review it?
Also, you know, our packets are delivered on Friday, but sometimes that information is there, you know, as of Monday. So if you're by City Hall, it might be good just to check, you know, those who are here more frequently, just to check, to make sure that you have information there. I will open the, if there are no further questions, the public hearing at this time, and anyone who would like to speak in the public hearing, you may come forward. You will have five minutes. However, if you speak tonight, you will not be able to speak at the next public hearing, when there will actually be a presentation by the developer. So if there's anyone who would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Then we will continue the public hearing until the 14th. Do we need a motion to continue at this time, or is it already set?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Then we will move now to item number 13, which is a public hearing, 2004-05 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Funds. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is the 30th year of the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. Our allocation from the federal government is $606,000. The Citizens Advisory Committee has met with all the formalities as required by HUD, and what's before you is the presentation of those distribution of dollars. John Raymond, our Director of Community and Economic Development, and also Dale Cook is here, and they can address any specific questions that you may have. Thank you.
Council? Questions on, yes?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a, an abstention question for the city attorney that I just noticed. I am within 400 feet of one of the projects that are listed for funding for these funds. Can I just abstain from that particular one?
You can abstain from that particular one. The way we've had to handle this in the past is the items that needed to be dealt with individually were dealt with first by the council, dealing with just the one item while the one council member stepped out. And then after whichever ones involving conflicts were dealt with, the council member came back, and then we dealt with the group thereafter.
Okay, thank you. So when we get to that point, I
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I will also, at that point, have to abstain on the AIDS Assistance Program as a board member.
I'm curious about, well, there's a couple of things that I'm curious about, but one of them is that I was really disappointed to see in this round of funding that we did very little with housing. And since that was, that is the part of the strategic plan around these funds, I was really disappointed, and I wanted to ask staff if there, when we look at these, at putting out these RFPs, do we in fact have some sort of a strategy to encourage certain types of groups to respond to these RFPs? Because there isn't, other than the youth shelter, there is no other housing kind of program in these grants.
Well, you've got, well, you have housing related. Because we have Fair Housing Council.
Yes, but it's not.
And the Home Repair Program.
Right, but the Home Repair Program, yes, but not actual housing.
If I might just indicate, it would really be best from a conflict standpoint, for ex, I don't know which the item was that Chris was talking about.
Line is six.
It might actually be best if, for example, Chris left, you just talked about item six and decided whether you were okay or not okay, and then he can come back in on six, and then if you did the same on Steve's, and after dealing with those two, then dealt with the broader questions, if that works.
If I might make a suggestion, if we, if the council would limit its questions to just questions.
It would really be better to try and just eliminate those two from being questions.
Well, the difficulty is that if, let's say hypothetically, they wanted to be, they wanted to reallocate, then if we've already made a decision on two items, then it makes it very difficult to do that.
That is the difficulty, but as long, as soon as you get into this idea of reallocating, then potentially that council member has an interest in all of the others from which the reallocation could occur.
Okay.
Just don't ask any questions about six.
I was asking a kind of generic question.
And seven. Do you want me to add?
Okay, yeah.
As far as the outreach process, you know, the outreach, the RFPs are noticed in the newspaper. The community at large, it's on the city's website, it's on Channel 17, again, and we also mail flyers and notices to, you know, all the prior applicants, all the people that have requested applications over the course of the year. I believe this year was over, you know, over 100 notices that were mailed to different organizations in the Coachella Valley. So there's a, there is a fair amount of outreach to all, and it's all different kinds of groups. It's social service groups, it's housing developers, it's, you know, other sorts of groups as well. On the housing, there are, as the mayor referred, there are a number of housing, small housing projects that are funded annually through CDBG. One is a senior home repair program, and that is a program that, you know, we, it's up to $1,500, and we provide emergency repairs, or ADA repairs, or different things like that for seniors and some low income. In addition to that, we established a roofing repair program this year with a larger limit, because roofs are more expensive than fixing a faucet or a screen door or something like that. Those are, those are sort of direct, you know, housing services that our department actually manages and provides. The last housing project that we put CDBG into was the nine self-help homes on Cottonwood and Chuckwalla back, and I think the allocation was made back in, you know, it goes back to 1995 or 96, is there was this recapture our neighborhoods program that the council established, and we gave Coachella Valley, where we made an allocation to Coachella Valley Housing Coalition of some money to go out and search for a property. I think originally it was supposed to be a special needs housing property, and it's sort of evolved into what is there now. We matched, we actually put some CDBG money into that. We came along later, put some agency money into that. Obviously, they got much more money from other funding sources. The problem with trying to develop housing, like we would say with Vista Sunrise, or with Coyote Run, or something like that, with our CDBG allocation, is that annually, you know, we're down to, our allocation for the last several years, because of the way Congress allocates CDBG, and they add more entitlement communities, they haven't, they haven't increased the pot nationally in several years. And they create more entitlement cities, and so we've gone from $645,000 just three years ago to $623,000, 618 now, down to $606. There's about $400,000 that we can spend on capital projects. You could find a, you know, dessert, a good housing project and find an allocation of $400,000 that really helps meet that gap, and put it into that project, and, but then, you know, if they haven't received any, say, federal money, now they're subject to Davis-Bacon, the prevailing wage, federal prevailing wage requirements. And so it's a, it's a push-pull between wanting to put the money into a housing project and not putting a small enough amount in that you wipe out the benefit of putting a relatively small amount of CDBG in, and that they're spending more now on prevailing wage. And so it's a development, it's a housing development community largely, I think, that is not, you know, knowing what our pot is, has not really come forward and actually applied for CDBG. So, you know, we rely more on agency, redevelopment agency housing money, where in the case of Coyote Run, for example, you know, we're putting a million dollars into it. Vista Sunrise, we're putting $1.3 million into it, and that's a more significant amount of money that helps fill a gap and actually can facilitate that.
I was not saying that I wanted us to go out and build affordable housing with this money. I was more concerned about what I felt in looking through these grants, even though there are some really, I mean, I think all the projects were really worthy projects. It sometimes feels to me, when we do these kinds of things, it's the tail wagging the dog, rather than us having a needs assessment kind of approach to it, that, and to use an example, is that we have no, there is not a shelter available for single women who are homeless in this city or in any of the surrounding cities. So I see that as a need. Approaching a provider to try and leverage this money with other monies to create some sort of a small group facility for homeless women that we have on the street would, to me, be more of addressing a need in the community, rather than, than whatever comes to us, we just decide which is the best of what comes to us, and still we have large needs out in the community that aren't being met, because people didn't come to us with their requests.
Well, the, we are undertaking, and if you remember last, at the last meeting, we allocated some of the program money toward the portion of the consolidated plan process. And the consolidated plan is a plan that we have to do every five years that kind of identifies what these needs are. And so, you know, I think we'd be happy to work with you through that process and identifying that. And then maybe later in the, in the year, you know, when that plan is wrapped up, it'd be a good opportunity to present it to the council, maybe kind of workshop it a little bit on some ideas, and get direction from you prior to, you know, us putting next year's RFP out, where we just put the RFP out and say, you know, here's all the people that have applied, and here, everybody can come and apply. And it, the mayor might remember, several, several, several years ago, the council attempted to do that. They made economic development a priority of CDBG, and tried to recast the program, and really clearly identify some priorities. And actually, for a couple of years, we got applications that were, all had an economic development spin on them. I mean, they, Desert Aids came in with their job retraining program that take advantage of the new drug cocktails, and people were getting better, and they could get out and work, and, and those were, you know, those had, had that, and that was based on the council saying, we'd like you to do things a little differently than you'd done it in the past. And so we're, staff is certainly open to doing that, but I think, you know, let's talk during the drafting of the consolidated plan, and, you know, and I think that will help identify some of the needs out there. And then we can go back to you with what the needs are, and then if you want to kind of alter this process for next year and say, you know, this is how, this is how we'd like it to go, then we can do that. And that would become part of the notice, and the applications will be different next year based on the direction that you give us to go ahead and do that.
Thank you. I just, yes, Mr. Pugnay.
I have a question. Go ahead, please.
No, go ahead, sorry.
JR, I have a couple of questions. First, I'm going to assume by the actions that we've taken at some of the previous council meetings the last two months, that there are no more unspent monies from the years 2002, 2003, and prior. Is that true?
That's correct, unless some things come in in the last couple of weeks. But, you know, some of those were loan repayments and things like that, so.
The second question is, chairman of this group last year, I'd like to ask about the
the James O'Jesse Unity Center, because I recall last year, as we were looking at that grant, we were thinking of doing three installments if they, if the project was worthwhile. And I guess I would like to hear verbally, is tell us a little bit further about that project, what they've done, what they've accomplished, how they spent the money, and how it's impacted the neighborhood, because they must have done a very good job to then go to a $208,000 request and grant this year.
Was that for the?
Oh, yes, a $208,000 grant request, which recommendation is $150,000, item number five.
That was for the expansion?
Uh huh. Yeah.
You know, can I, is it okay if I have Dale answer that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dale was at the, at the meetings.
I just.
No?
I'd just like you to see the progress they've made, because I see it's really stepped up. There was a big request, and now it's $150,000, which is a very big part of the budget.
Okay.
It was actually two phases. The first phase, as you recall, the center is now, the gymnasium area has a trellis overhang. And it, the first year, last year, was allocating funds to enclose that area. There was a desire, even with last year's allocation, to begin to do the architectural design that would resurrect the 1986 proposal to have a new addition that would join both the gymnasium and the recreation center. Well, the desire of the committee this year was to go ahead and fully fund that the architectural design for both phases would occur at one time, and we could proceed in bidding and constructing the entire project. There were members that have served previously, that other projects, specifically Crosley Track, had lingered for a number of phases, and as we did with Tramview Road, we specifically wanted to do the project and be, and be complete. So that was a desire, as they got the bump up, to be able to do the entire project.
Okay, thanks, Dale.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I did receive during your discussion a letter for your record concerning this item for the hearing that you'll need to have as part of your record.
Okay. Then we will open the hearing at this time. I have a few cards here, and the first person that I have is Eileen Packer, Stroke Recovery Center. Please come forward this time. You will have five minutes. And welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Eileen Packer, and I'm the executive director of the Stroke Recovery Center in Palm Springs. Regrettably, our recent application for the Community Development Block grant was denied. The notes I reviewed attached as Exhibit A is from the approved staff report to city council concerning CDBG grant number B, B08MC060561. I call your attention to page 10. Comments contained on item 14 demonstrates funding was denied to us because of eight of our clients live in Palm Springs. This is a gross error. Please let me call your attention to our application, specifically Exhibit F2 contained herein as Exhibit B, wherein we clearly demonstrate that 110 of our 156 clients are from Palm Springs, as noted by zip code. Additionally, the percentage of poverty, low and moderately low-income clients is 62.05% of our client base. We strongly feel this error may have caused us to lose much-needed funding. The purpose of my addressing you this evening is to ask that a determination be made to ascertain whether or not the reason for denial of funding was directly tied to this error. Under this harsh financial climate, we have no alternative but to respectfully request a review and reconsideration of our request for funding. Thank you. And if I may say that, May is Stroke Awareness Month, and we are going to be having open houses through the Wednesday of May, and we'd like to invite the city council. Thank you.
And thank you. The next person is Rick Lance of CASA. Please come forward at this time. You'll have five minutes. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rick Lance. I'm the president of CASA, standing for Court Appointed Special Advocates. According to the Riverside County Children's Services, there are 4,479 children in the juvenile court system. Children move from their homes due to physical, mental, or emotional abuse, neglect, or abandonment. All this means that there is a real risk that thousands of these children, your children, will become homeless, criminals, victims of crime, dope addicts, costing taxpayers huge sums of money. This is where CASA comes in. We are highly trained volunteers cleared by the Department of Justice who work on a one-on-one basis with these youngsters, rather than one to 40 or one to 50, ratio in which unfortunately, social workers find themselves. We are the children's advocates and mentors. On the way here, I thought I'd tell you a story, a true story, deviating from what I've read out, I wrote out. I was a volunteer a couple of years ago, and in Indio, the juvenile court judge asked me if I could step in and help a seventeen-and-a-half-year-old youngster, a boy, who was going to age out in a matter of six months. He was a high school senior, and he was going to be no longer dependent of the court, and that means he was going to be on his own at 18. His father died when this boy was an infant. His mother diagnosed as schizophrenic. He had been drifting in and out of group homes, foster homes, not going too far anywhere. And so I met with him in Reno Valley, and I asked him when's the last time he met with a social worker, and he said about three months ago. And I said, that couldn't be, three months, supposed to meet once a month. Well, I checked up on it, and unfortunately, the social worker was on, on a medical leave, which is unfortunate for her, but more importantly, her, her file, this boy's files, whether some 40 or 50 other files were not transferred. They were sitting on her desk, or in her files, file cabinets. Nobody was dealing with this young boy as well as others. And he was going nowhere. And according to the records submitted to the court, they said everything is going to, according to plan, but there was no plan. And so I stepped in and found out that this youngster was quite a whiz in computers. And I helped him get into ITT in San Bernardino, a two-year school that, among other things, helps you with computer science. I helped him get an apartment. I helped him get a bus pass, went to DMV, got an ID card for him. He doesn't have a driver's license, and so many of these boys and girls don't. I got him gift certificates from Ralph so he can eat. Got him some clothes. I gave him some advice in various areas, including dealing with safe sex. He's now going to be out on his own as an 18-year-old. And I think I gave him a bit of encouragement and helped him towards self-respect. Well, that was two years ago, and in June, coming up, I'll be present at his graduation. He's going to be graduating with a degree, an Associate of Arts degree in computer science, and I, and hopefully shortly thereafter, I'll be helping him celebrate for his first real job. Now, I'm not telling you this to pat myself on the back. I'm sure every single volunteer we have could have done just as good, if not a better, job. We are dedicated, and we're trained. That's a success story. But there are hundreds, if not thousands, of children that don't have a CASA, that slip through the cracks, who unfortunately, dealing with, with the system that is not dealing with them. And interestingly, coincidentally, you had a proclamation dealing with teenage alcoholics, which is at a crisis level. And Mr. Mayor, you read some staggering statistics. Well, the juvenile court kids usually don't have people to mentor them on this critical area, as well as other critical areas. And this again is where our volunteers come in, to give sound advice, to give direction, to give encouragement. Back to my little speech. We're asking money to recruit, train, and supervise volunteers. Currently, we have only 150 volunteers, which is a drop in the bucket compared to the approximate 4,500 kids in Riverside County that need us. To manage these volunteers, we need paid professional case managers, college-educated, with our goal of doubling our volunteer base, which in turn requires these all-important case managers, preferably bilingual. As an aside, the juvenile court has earmarked about 160 children waiting for CASA volunteers. They're waiting, they're waiting for us, but we can't help them because we don't have the money or manpower this time. Our volunteers literally put in thousands of hours of significant work, tax-free work, which helps communities. So your grant is but a small investment towards receiving a very large sum, and will go towards leaving. Thank you.
And thank you. Bert Kaplan. Followed by Shawna Hershey. Good evening and welcome. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Bert Kaplan. I've been a resident of the Coachella Valley for 23 years. I would like to start the same way we start each of our board meetings, by telling you that the mission of the Arthritis Foundation is to improve lives through leadership in the prevention, control, and cure of arthritis and its over 100 related diseases. I've been a member of the Board of Directors of the Coachella Valley branch of the Arthritis Foundation for 22 years. Recently, we have received updated information from the Centers of Disease Control that, showing that arthritis is the nation's number-one cause of disability, with a nationwide economic impact of more than $82 billion annually, and that one out of three adults in the nation, but one out of two adults in the Coachella Valley suffer from arthritis. My wife and I are two of two. I'm 75 years old, and arthritis hit me just five years ago. If you're lucky enough not to have arthritis, you probably have a loved one who does suffer from this disease. Arthritis strikes teens, baby boomers, and seniors alike, and over 300,000 children are affected. And as the US population ages, it's likely that the prevalence of arthritis will continue to climb, and more who suffer from this disease will come to our beautiful desert, because our climate makes them feel better. The Arthritis Foundation was actually, began here, right here in the Coachella Valley, right here in Palm Springs, in fact, in 1948, 56 years ago, by financier Floyd Oldham as its chairman. At that time, only 300 physicians in the United States were, had the medical specialty of rheumatology, those who dealt with arthritis. At that time, they were told to return to their homeland, establish clinics, and get physicians and the public aroused to work to lick this monster arthritis. And I'm here to ask you to help us lick this monster arthritis. We're doing something about arthritis in the Coachella Valley. Last year alone, over 97,000 valley residents received direct benefit from the work of our branch, taking part in the over 105 programs that we offer each week, in pool, or land-based, or in educational meetings with qualified physicians as speakers. We're all very proud of the services we render. Now, 97,000 last year. Two years ago, that was 70,000 who took advantage. So you can see how this has grown. We also fund a very special camp in the foothills of San Bernardino called Camp Esperanza, Camp Hope, for children four to 17 years old with juvenile rheumatoid arthritis. The camp is a special week-long overnight experience for these young children, providing them with traditional camp activities, such as swimming and horseback riding, while finding comfort and encouragement in a community of their peers. It costs $1,000 to send a child to Camp Esperanza, but we give them that week at no cost to them. So with all the research, a cure for arthritis is yet to come, but we keep trying, and we keep pushing, and we keep funding. Take a poll of an exit, take an exit poll of those who take part in our programs, and they'll tell you how much less pain they feel most days, and how much they look forward to these wonderfully helpful programs. Our programs are prevention at its best with those with arthritis, and probably the most important factor is that we empower with education, and by providing the education, it enables them to make better choices. 60% of those with arthritis feel there is no solution to their problem. I'm here to tell you that we are that solution. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Shawna Hershey, followed by Karen Merritt. Good evening and welcome. You'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. My name is Shawna Hershey, and I am the Program Director at the Arthritis Foundation. And as Bert said, it is the number-one cause of disability in the United States. And what we've asked for the CDBG grant is to be able to fund and expand our programs and services, primarily in the area of exercise. We have found that exercise is the, one of the greatest rewards that people with arthritis can do for themselves. We have a motto at the Arthritis Foundation nationally that says, "Take control. We can help." We want people in our valley to learn to take control for themselves, and start doing things that are going to be proactive, and help them, and, and exercise is one of them. We have a land-based program, as Bert mentioned, it's called PACE, and that stands for People With Arthritis Can Exercise. And it's a, in a land-based setting, some people who can't move around too much can sit and do their exercises in a chair. Others can get up and move around a little more active. We also have a pool aquatics exercise program. We already currently have these programs implemented in Palm Springs, but sadly enough, we don't have enough instructors, and we have waiting lists. We have waiting lists of 40, 50, 60 people waiting to get into these classes. And the reason why is only, one instructor can only accommodate a certain amount of, of participants in their classes. So we're coming to you to ask you to help us, fund us, so that we can create more classes, to help the children, as we talked about, as Bert mentioned earlier, about the children with arthritis, to help fund them, to get them up to this campus bronza that is absolutely phenomenal. If you see these kids up there, they have such a wonderful time. It gives them a chance to be with peers that have the same issues that they do, and they don't have to feel separated and segregated from their, their other peers. I had a opportunity here not too long ago to meet a woman who sadly enough was diagnosed with juvenile rheumatoid arthritis when she was 14. Since that time, she's had 16 surgeries. She's had 12 replacements, joint replacements. She's had knees replaced, hips replaced, elbows, wrists, shoulders. In fact, she calls herself the bionic babe. But this is, this is the effect of arthritis. We don't realize that. We think of arthritis as maybe a little ache and a pain, but it's much, much more than that. And I'm very, very passionate about it. We have a wonderful foundation here. There's three of us that work in the office. We do a lot of fundraising, but we still need more help. So we come to you and ask you to help us with that. Thank you.
And thank you. Karen Merritt, please come forward this time. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening and thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Karen Merritt. I'm the Project Director for Operation Safe House, which is currently a development project to build a 15,000-square-foot, 20-to-24-bed facility for our homeless runaway and throwaway youth. It will serve the needs of these youth throughout the Coachella Valley, and to date, there are no other facilities to serve this very special population. At this time, I'd like to thank the Citizens Advisory Council for recommending $32,000 in funding, CDPG funding, for this particular project. It certainly meets the needs of the city's strategic plan under Homeless Strategy Goal 1 and 2, as well as Special Population Strategy Goal 1 and 2. I'd like to let you know that the project goal is to address the immediate needs of this very special population by replicating a highly successful project in Riverside by the name of Operation Safe House, which is the corporation that has agreed to expand services to the valley. Through provisions of immediate emergency shelter services, comprehensive assessment and case management services, as well as individual group and family counseling, Safe House of the Desert will foster the development of proper coping skills and conflict resolution, which will affect, affect, change adult lives and family situations. 56% of the children who land in the, in the shelter in Riverside are there because of family conflict. 22% are there because of family violence, child abuse, and one- child abuse in one form or another. We were recommended for $32,000 worth of funding to essentially build the block wall, which will provide security as we construct the facility. Our original request was for $50,000 to help build the wall, and number two, for some of the onsite work that needs to be done. And although I don't want to appear ungrateful, I'm thrilled that we were recommended at this funding level. I would respectfully ask the council to consider adding another $8,000 to our award, CDBG award, to cover the cost of demolition. Currently, the lot in Thousand Palms has a dilapidated house and some outbuildings, outbuildings on the property. And in order for us to move forward on schedule with the construction, we need to have $8,000 to demolish and $32,000 to build the wall for security. So with that, I would like to answer any questions that you may have about the project or about our funding request. None. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this item, please come forward at this time. I see one person is at all. Because we will close after your remarks. Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry I wasn't here to get my card in earlier.
Please give your name.
Wayne Fleischer. I'm the Program Director, excuse me, for the AIDS Assistance Program. Mayor Oden, City Council, Members of Staff. This is the fourth year we've applied for this Community Development Block Grant. But interestingly enough, this is the first year, which I'm pleased to say we're asking for money to do something a little differently. In the past three years, the council was kind enough to help us with funding to alleviate an annual waiting list, which we would have generally at this time of year when we applied for our grant. Fortunately, for the first time in over five years, we do not have a waiting list. And this is in some part due to a program we instituted four years ago when we realized we couldn't continue to grow infinitum forever and keep taking more and more people in because of financial restrictions. And in the recent cuts that we've had in the last two years, it's become even more apparent that we need to expand what we've discovered is a very successful program in helping people get back to work. We got, we're fortunate enough to have a $25,000 grant five years ago, which has carried us through to current times. Unfortunately, the original funder is no longer able to help us in this particular area. But what we've discovered is that Social Security, Medi-Cal, Medicare, and even the federal government have changed a lot of rules regarding disabilities in the last three years in particular. And that information has all been designed to help facilitate people going back to work. Unfortunately, this information doesn't seem to make it down to the rank-and-file public in any kind of fashion that's useful. The last three years, we've been doing seminars, trainings, in an effort to get the information out faster. Since HIV is now classified as a managed-care, long-term chronic condition, and I can illustrate that by letting you know that four years ago, we would lose eight to 10 clients a month due to death. Last year, we lost only 13, which is good. But it's a double-edged sword because these people are still in the program. We serve people who earn less than $15,000 a year. 100% of our clients are in that category, 53% of whom live in Palm Springs proper. So these people don't have the luxury of long-term disability or other things that are life insurance or homeownership or things of this nature. And what we've been able to do in the last three years is help facilitate anywhere from 75 to 120 people back into the workforce. What this enables them to do many times is recoup a better benefits package. So if they do become ill again, they go out with better Social Security, better benefits, and possibly even LTD. So what we've asked you for is an opportunity to expand this program and continue to educate the public. Because the greatest fear people have in going back to work at this point in time is losing their medical benefits. That's not the case anymore, the way the laws have been redesigned. Perfect example, I'll give you a quick, is that Medicare now has a 250% of poverty buy-in program, which enables you to go back to work and pay a premium like you would with an HMO. So it's, in many cases, it's better than a lot of HMOs because the premiums generally range from $20 a month to 100, 150. And it's all based on your income. But you don't lose your other benefits as well. So this is the kind of information that we're trying to get out to the public. In fact, we've planned a focus group in June at the Desert Pride Center to try and get an idea. And this focus group is going to be opened up not just to HIV, but to all disabilities because this, all these laws affect disabilities in general. And our goal is to hit the HIV community first and then expand as we pull more and more people in. And in closing, I'd just like to let you know that as a 20-year survivor of HIV, my current job is the result of such a program. I was the second referral from the original DAP Job Referral Project, and I have to say that working is largely responsible for my state of mental and physical health today. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Then we will close the hearing at this time. Do we want to, can I take a sec?
Before, before we do that, I have a staff question.
Okay. Staff, please come forward.
I would like an answer for Ms. Packer's question regarding the number of clients served because there does seem to be some discrepancy from what she submitted, from the narrative and what's on our report.
The, I believe the number, the number eight taken from the application was when they broke the cost down of the $25,000 application in the smaller increments. They calculated the annual cost per client and using the average of 155 clients, which was a valley-wide number. And, and they concluded that paragraph by saying the CDBG funding, therefore at $25,000, will provide payment of services for 7.69 clients for one year, or 384 days of treatment for one person. So I think the staff took that as, not that they only serve eight people from Palm Springs, but that the grant would serve, would pay for eight people, or 7.94 people, but eight people for a year. So if, could look at it as, it's either a misinterpretation or, or it's that they were funding eight people for one year.
Okay, are there any others? Okay, then. Want to state your lead? Six.
Mr. Mills, if you're exiting on item number six, and that's going to be taken separate, could you state again what your conflict is for me, please?
I own a piece of property within the, within 400 feet of the project area.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, are there any questions? Would you like a staff report on item number six? Then we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve item six.
Second. Have a motion and a second. If there are no questions, roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. And it passes 401. And we'll move to item number seven. Mr. Pogey?
Ms. Sanders, I'm staying as a board member of the AIDS Assistance Program.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, or if we need a staff report?
I'll move number seven, approval for number seven.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Mills and a second by Councilmember McCullough. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor?
Aye. It passes 401. Okay. Now for the rest.
I'll move the resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second with some comments.
Okay.
I would just like to take this opportunity to, as Chairman of this group last year and a Committee Member of the year prior, several individuals spent a lot of time looking at these issues and evaluating proposals. And I'm going to quickly list the committee. Dorothy Bowens from the Human Rights Commission, Bruce Puchore from Park and Recs, Ricky Wright from the Planning Commission, Jim Schell from the Office on Aging, Rick Hutchinson from the AIDS Assistance Program, and Angie Patrick, who's targeted low-income areas. And they work very, very hard and spend a lot of time on this. So I just want to say thank you.
I'd like to add to that. Ms. Bowens could not be here tonight due to a prior commitment. And Representative Jim Schell from the Office of Aging isn't here because he is slated to undergo surgery tomorrow. So Jim, our thoughts and our prayers are with you. I'd like to say, if there is one area that I am very pleased with the progress that we have made, it is in our handling of the CDBG funding. We've done a lot of work in this area, and it has matured. And Councilmember Pugnay worked with it last year. It has become more focused. And even tonight, I mean, we talked years ago about the different voids that we were experiencing. And to see, what is it? The Operation Safe House, which is actually coming in to fill one of those voids that we talked about years ago. So our needs assessment really has worked, and it is more focused. And, you know, we were used to just do a kind of piecemeal, all these things together. But I'm real pleased to see the progress. And I'd like to say a special thank you to the committee and to the staff for doing an outstanding job. And for those who did not receive funding this year, who applied, we certainly encourage you to apply next year. Where you see, you know, a lot of it is in how, knowing how to apply. So hopefully, this process will have assisted you in knowing how to apply for the next year. And we look forward to your full participation. With that, roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, and it passes unanimously. And we will move to our next item on the agenda. Item number 14, zoning text amendment. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. There are several, several items included in this zoning text amendment. And Mr. Evans will give that report in just a moment. I would like to point out one thing. Included in here is the architectural review changes. This is part of a process that council had instructed us to undertake some time ago, and it represents a business-friendly process, if you will. And I certainly would like to thank Councilmember Mills, who gave us a significant insight into this process. But the important thing here is that the action tonight will formalize that process insofar as the members will be appointed by the Planning Commission. There will be additional public notice and input. And, and the key thing is that a member of the Planning Commission will be a part and member of the architectural review. And that's important for the specific reason if things potentially could bounce back and forth between the two groups, that would cause issues for developers, time, et cetera. With a member of the Planning Commission on the architectural review, when that issue gets back to the Planning Commission after architectural review, in theory, it will have an advocate that will explain the nuances of the discussion that occurred down below. So with that, we're pleased to bring this before you, and I would ask Doug Evans to give you the report on the other items on this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Architectural Approval Ordinance is the first item described in your staff report. This is basically the framework by which the city reviews and approves all new development projects, whether they be public or private, whether they be on private property or public property. It includes median islands, signs, as well as colors, buildings, and materials of all buildings. The easiest way to tell you what's not subject to architectural approval is to tell you, single-family homes on flat land not located on major thoroughfares. The city has an architectural review process that covers commercial buildings, industrial buildings, multifamily residential buildings, hillside residential projects, as well as all public buildings and public spaces. The ordinance before you has gone through an extensive public review process. The Planning Commission meeting has had numerous workshops on this over the past several years. There have been several City Council study sessions with the previous council. It's been reviewed by the Development Task Force. And I can tell you that it's probably the longest worked-over ordinance we've had in quite some time to make sure that we got as much input in as we could. The key changes to the Architectural Approval Ordinance, Mr. Reddy outlined the key issue, and that is the commission-appointed committee, three California licensed architects, one California licensed landscape architect, one other design professional, and additional members with similar or related experience. The idea there is architectural review should be technical. It is not a layperson's review. This is a meeting that we put tons of information in front of the members. They might review anywhere from eight to 10 projects, from architecture to site planning to grading to landscape to lighting, all of the details of a project. And if you can't read plans fast, this is really a tough meeting to attend. It's, it's a very fast-paced meeting, and it's one that requires a lot of technical expertise. Having the Planning Commission approve, appoint the group really fulfills the way the, this city has operated for many, many years, and that is the City Council has really delegated the Planning Commission functions and its recommendations to you, to the Planning Commission. So it acts as an independent review body that provides recommendations to the City Council. We've made some fairly minor changes having to do with clarifying exterior lighting, sign programs and the like. One of the key issues in this that will take some things off the Planning Commission agenda that have really bogged us down for many years is sign programs. If you have a multi-tenanted building right now, the ordinance says you can do the best sign program in the world, but the Planning Commission has to approve it. We believe that well-designed sign programs should be approved by staff, and staff for a signed program for a new building will consult with the new Architectural Advisory Committee. One of the key components is a change relative to hillside developments. We've obviously been experiencing some growing and growth in our hillside areas. It's created some growing pains. Many people have lived in neighborhoods for a long time that haven't had hillside development. And that lot next door, all of a sudden, somebody wants to build a house on it, and they've become very accustomed to the fact that it's a vacant lot. They view it as their view corridor, their exercise area. And the changes that we're proposing here link back into the hillside ordinance, which I'll get to in a moment. And it's basically a notification process that may result in public hearings on hillside, single-family homes. And I'll get to that in a brief moment. The ordinance clarifies staff approval authority rather specifically. There had been some complaints previously that staff had a broad range of authority. People couldn't figure out what staff could approve and could not approve. And to eliminate confusion, we've gone back in and put some criteria in relative to staff approval, the process to appeal a staff decision so that people can get to the Planning Commission very quickly if they're unhappy with a staff decision. And then Planning Commission review and authority has been clarified. One of the key areas that came up when we looked at this from a legal perspective, if a project requires an environmental assessment, the way our ordinance is set up right now, it could be a review- it could be reviewed and approved without a public hearing. In looking at the legality of that, we felt that it would be much more appropriate, if a project requires an environmental assessment, it essentially says it may have an effect on adjoining properties or the community. We feel that in that case, we should have a public hearing, that's another regulatory element that's not new, or that is new to the ordinance, but we feel that really under California case law, it's really mandatory, and the good news is it will not affect that many projects, if any, in most years. Most projects that are less than five acres in size are exempt under California law, projects that are over five acres are the ones that we would be looking at, and we don't process very many architectural approval applications for projects that are over five acres that don't have a permit that would require an environmental assessment and public hearing anyway. So that, while it's a change and it's an additional regulation, it's really not going to catch that many projects in the course of a year, as far as taking a look at past activity. The ordinance has a provision that we will provide the agendas to the Architectural Advisory Committee, to the designated neighborhood representatives, that doesn't mean everybody in a neighborhood, but the designated representatives will send the agenda to them so that they can see what's going on at design review or architectural level. We're currently doing that as a courtesy, but we're recommending that we codify it. And one of the items that I think is, is customer-friendly as anything that we could put in, currently, architectural approval projects expire in two years if you don't act upon them, that's a firm expiration, you'd have to reapply, and we're basically putting in a provision that allows retroactive time extensions for, extensions for good cause. Quite often, we'll get calls from people and they missed it by a week or two, and we think that allowing people to file a retroactive time extension for something that they've worked very hard for is, is good city business, and it's something that in the past, the city had done on a routine basis, but it was never in the actual ordinances. The architectural approval ordinance, as I indicated, went through extensive review, you know, in my opinion, I think it's clarifying a lot of the things that community members have had questions about, some of the questions came up in neighborhood groups, the group is going to be subject to the Brown Act, we're going to keep meeting minutes, they're going to elect a chairman and a vice chairman, so the actual committee will run the meeting right now, staff does, and I think probably the, the most important issue, if the committee is appointed by the Planning Commission, the members will take it much more seriously, not to say that they don't work hard now, but their attendance will be more regular, you'll have a regular group of people, and I think you'll, you'll not have some of the complaints that we've had where, you know, you come one week and you've got five people, you come next week, you have three people. If you have a commission-appointed group, you'll have pretty much that seven member group at each meeting, the ordinance also includes two alternates, so that if somebody's absent, we can call alternates to come in, and that way, we have a good hearty committee looking at, at projects. If I can tell you, the, the public comment that you heard at the beginning of the meeting, what's the soul of this city when it comes to the built environment, it's my opinion that good, strong architectural review is what has made this city one that people are so mindful of, protective of, and passionate about, because it has character. It doesn't look like hometown USA, we struggle to make sure it doesn't look like hometown USA, but the Architectural Advisory Committee is the place that that occurs, and sometimes they take criticism for trying to do that, but I think in the long run, it helps and benefits the community. That's the architectural approval ordinance. I do have a legislative draft, if you want to see the changes that came out to you as one continuous ordinance, so if you'd like to see the legislative draft, you can see where those pieces fit in, I can pass it out now, or I can hold it until I make the complete report on the hillside ordinance and the next one. Mr. Mayor, your pleasure.
I, I've certainly seen it, Mr. Mayor, and I've, for five years, and I'm quite aware of it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move on to the hillside development. This is an ordinance that develops all property with, in hillside areas, and we define a hillside area as any property with a 10% slope or greater, that's relatively flat, that's our alluvial fans, as well as the actual mountainside, and most of our development activity is in the alluvial fans in slopes that range from 5% to 10%, only a portion of the lot might even exceed 10%, so relatively flat areas, so we have a fairly restrictive hillside ordinance in that regard. I think the key issue that we looked at here, again, was to establish a formal notification process to the adjacent property owners. When an application is filed, within a few days, we're going to send a note, a little letter to the neighbors and say, we have an application for a hillside house, come down to City Hall and see the plans. Ten days prior to the Planning Commission meeting that it's on, we're going to send them a note that says the Planning Commission's going to look at the plans on this date. If the Planning Commission or the director feel that there's significant controversy, we can set it for a hearing, so there would be an actual public hearing. One of the challenges that we run into and causes conflict in the field is people do get the notice today as a courtesy, they come down and look at the plans, they ask a lot of questions about the plans, most people see pretty pictures when they look at architectural plans. As soon as the grading starts, they call us up and say it's different. We work out the grading after hours in the field, the first building wall that goes up, they call us up and say it's different, we go out and explain the plans, and what we've found is, is people really want input on hillside houses, we feel that this is a, a good change, and actually might eliminate a lot of staff time in the field. I can tell you, I'm working on several hillside houses, myself and the, the staff planner have spent hours mediating disputes between neighbors at every step of the way. We, we go out almost weekly on some of them, so the, the public hearing process, if necessary, I think is a big change. The ordinance would have provisions to define what staff can approve, percentages of construction, things of that nature, so there's a very clear understanding of staff approval, and I think what could be in the long run, one of the more creative parts of the ordinance is an exception provision. Currently, the minimum street widths in hillside areas are 32 to 36 feet, depending on the type of street, how many houses are served, we've recommended a exception criteria where hillside street, streets, the travelway could be as little as 24 feet, and in doing that, we would look at site distance, vertical, horizontal, we'd look at off-street parking, things of that nature, it would be a very rigorous test to reduce the street standard by the Planning Commission and/or the council, but it will allow to be able to, to match up with our existing neighborhoods, in the Chino Canyon area, the Little Tuscany area, the Mesa area, places like that. This ordinance now allows the city engineer and the planning staff to be a little bit more flexible in trying to make streets fit neighborhoods, because most of our hillside areas are already developed, and we get into real conflicts with standard plans versus what makes sense in the field. The third change has to do with something the council looked at in December last year, changed to the community shopping center standard, basically, by right-of-zone, business schools could go in up to 25,000 square feet, and then between 25,000 square feet and 40,000 square feet, it would be a conditional use permit, and then above 40,000 square feet, it would not be permitted. The belief there is to, if somebody wants a business school and a community shopping center, that the council expressed some concerns that they didn't want that to creep, where it came in at 20,000 feet, then it's 40,000, then it's 50% of the shopping center, and before you know it, you've got a private school in a, in a commercial shopping center setting. There is one minor change that we would recommend that you make to these that really came up after we went through the, all of the text writing, is all the references to the Director of Planning and Zoning, we're going to, for second reading, we'll have those references to Director of Planning Services, that would be the new position that would administer these ordinance. That completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Doug, I noticed in, in the, in all of the explanations regarding the Architectural Advisory Committee, you, you said it, but it's not included, is a licensed architect, it just says California-based architect, and I'd like to see you include licensed in that.
Let me check something real quickly. The staff report indicates, we just said based, the actual ordinance says three California licensed architects, so if they're licensed.
I didn't see that, I just saw that in the.
I believe if you look at page 14C2, it says that, section C on that page.
This was the most confusing thing we've ever covered since all of these were just lumped in together. 14C2.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Ms. Vogt, I noticed that as well, so, but I, I would certainly like to staff, to thank staff, planning commissioners over the years that have worked on this, public who has been involved in this, I, I feel very strongly that this is a, is a very important change for how we, we process projects through this city, it will, it will, in my opinion, create a, a stronger, a stronger involvement of, of neighborhoods than it has in the past, thanks, thanks to Mr. Evans' efforts in, towards that, towards that end. It will also give the Planning Commission an opportunity to do more planning and less looking at, looking at, at colors and picking out little, little things that perhaps really don't fit in the privy of the overall view of the, of a Planning Commission. I think that's been something that, that, that I think is, is well worth it. The process, as Mr. Evans mentioned, is, I know attendance has been a, has been a problem, I think Mr. Evans's observation is right, that it becomes an official body, that it, the attendance will be taken, taken much more seriously, and again, that's not to say it isn't, but the consistency has been a problem, and we've heard about it. I think, as Mr. Reddy also noted, that this is very much a streamlining of the current system, which I think is already a good system, but this will even make it, make it better and allow things to move faster, which has always been our, our, our goal. I would like to, though, just like to split this ordinance, because I really am not in favor of the last section, 9211, double, double zero, and I really don't want to vote no on this ordinance, so if it, what I would like to do is to move the ordinance for introduction and first reading for the two revisions with the exception of 921100, and hope that that could come back as another vote right away, and I would read title and wave text.
Mr. Mills is consistent.
Second. Your concern is 921100?
Right, that's the, the, the school and the shopping center.
I, I might suggest that that's section three of the ordinance, because it's presented one ordinance tonight, you need to move forward one ordinance, if we delete that section and come back with an ordinance that will have a different ordinance number, only including that section, we could put that on your next agenda, the hearing, I don't think we have to redo the hearing, because it was noticed to deal with all of that subject matter, but since we don't have that second one in a separate ordinance tonight, I think what we would do is put that back on your next agenda, so you can act separately on that, and the ordinance you're acting on tonight would deal with the design and hillside issues solely.
Let me ask Mr. Evans if that affects any projects that you're dealing with currently?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions, observations, comments?
For sure.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. We know you're, you're in a hurry, but we probably need to open the hearing.
Yes, we do.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I'm way too anxious on this one, way too anxious.
But it's okay. We will open the hearing at this time, anyone who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward on the zoning text amendment, you will have five minutes. Then we will close the hearing. And now we.
Remake my motion, eliminating section three?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
And then I'll read the title.
Yes.
Read title.
Read title, wave text. That is correct, motion and second.
Thank you. This would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the zoning ordinance in regard to chapter 94.00, section 94.04.00, architectural review, to revise the permit process for architectural approval applications, chapter 93.00, section 93.13.00, hillside developments, to revise the permit processing procedures for hillside development applications, and to establish alternative street standards for hillside areas.
Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it passes unanimously. I'd just like to say a special thank you to Chris for all the time, effort, and energy that you've put forward on this, thank you very much. And at this time, we will take a recess.
Moving back to order, and I understand, Mr. Mills, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring back that Section 3 of Item 14 that we just dealt with for some direction. And what I would like this to see is, the objection I have is I would prefer that this use, that this particular use be done by conditional use permit rather than a writ of zone. And I would like to have it go back to Planning Commission if possible, let them review it, and then come back to us if that's acceptable.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if there are any changes made in the recommendations of Planning Commission, council level, it's supposed to refer back to Planning Commission anyway. So since you've separated it out, I think that it would be perfectly appropriate for the council to ask that that matter go back to the Planning Commission for report on that issue.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, we're just finishing up next week's Planning Commission agenda. We'll put it on the agenda for next Wednesday, and it'll come back to your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Talk about response.
Ooh, yeah.
All right, we'll move-
It's a new architectural review board.
Yes, yeah, yeah, right.
It's not existed yet.
Business friendly, that's what it is. Thank you. And we'll move to item number 15, which is a public hearing, convention center expansion Phase II, TFR hearing, 2004 Series A lease revenue bonds, staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would ask Finance Director Tom Knar to give you the particulars on these financial, actually, this is, again, a companion resolution for the convention center expansion bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as Mr. Eddy said, this is a companion piece to the action you already took as the financing authority. It approves the sale of the bonds for the expansion of the convention center and the refinancing of some existing bonds. After the public hearing, we would recommend that you pass the ordinance for introduction and first reading. The second reading would come back to you next week at an adjourned meeting. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And Ms. Harrell, our financial advisor, is also in the audience to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on the staff report? Then we will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak to item number 15, please come forward. You will have five minutes. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, we've already had extensive discussion, so I would like to move the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Fote, and by Mr. Mills. And with the ordinance, that is to retitle, waive tax?
Yeah.
This is not as an ordinance, this is a resolution.
No, it's an ordinance.
It's the last page.
There's two documents in there, we're recommending the ordinance.
So not what says on the agenda. Yes, that's fine with me.
So just for my clarification, Mr. Mayor, is the Finance Director recommending not to approve the resolution?
We, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify, we put both a resolution in there and an ordinance, and it was because we weren't sure which would be the most efficient method of accomplishing the financing, and so you just need to pass one of them. You don't need to act on the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I just like to clarify that the resolution is for supplemental number three, the ordinance is for supplement number four.
I stand corrected, you do need to pass both, I'm sorry.
Okay. So.
Okay, then I will stand corrected and go back to the resolution. I thought it was an either/or, so I'm back at 15C, which is the resolution, so I'm moving that.
Okay, so we have a motion for the resolution and the ordinance, and a second?
Yes, waive, read tax, retitle, waive tax.
Reading the title and waiving the text. Roll call.
Okay, this would be an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, approving and authorizing the execution of supplemental lease agreement number four relating to the City of Palm Springs Financing Authority Lease Revenue Bonds 2004 Series A Convention Center Expansion Project. Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, and it passes unanimously. We will move to council comments, announcements, and interagency reports.
Do we not now have to pass 15D?
No, you did.
Yes, we did both.
She only read one.
The other one was the, okay.
Counsel comments, announcements, interagency reports.
Where are we?
I'd like to defer my time to the mayor, having seen his list.
Mr. Mayor, I was asked that you submit your list in writing. I do have a request, shall I go first, or do you want to?
Yeah, you go first.
I would like to have staff get back to us with an expedited timeline for the taxi ordinance. And I also would like to put on the agenda the creation of a subcommittee to discuss and meet with the owner of the Fashion Plaza.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is on the agenda, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I need to jump in there and refer that, actually, Councilwoman Fote asked me about that, and I suggested that she make that request from the podium, not knowing that it was on the agenda, or forgetting it was on the agenda.
Yeah, I prepared to.
So that was my error, not Ms. Fote's, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, okay, and you're right, I've, they've embarrassed me out of making my report now. But there are just a couple of things that I would like to highlight. One was the ribbon cutting of the Cala Lily Inn on South Bolardo, they've just done a marvelous job at that facility. I had an opportunity to speak at Mizel Center to the widows and widowers, we just had a great time there, and I'd like to thank them for that opportunity. I also had the opportunity to visit the Wildlife Way Station, and that was quite an experience, because, and they rescue animals from all over, and they're interested in doing something at some point here in the City of Palm Springs, wild animals. But, you know, you go to a zoo and you see the animals, and it's like, you know, they don't care whether the people are there or not. It was amazing at this place to see the animals respond to people. I mean, these huge cats, tigers, and lions would actually come down, you know, to the cages and rub up against them for you to rub them. I mean, it was absolutely amazing, and to see the number of animals that are rescued. And it was just an incredible evening. I had dinner there with Martine, who is the founder, and, boy, just to be there and you hear, it was like having dinner in the middle of the jungle or the forest. I mean, to hear, not like two or three lions, but I mean like 20, 30 lions roaring back and forth to each other, and tigers, and, I mean, just so many animals. It was absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing. So that was a real highlight. Had the opportunity to, along with Chris Mills, to attend the Senior Inspiration Awards, where Don Aitkins, who was our school board member, who was honored, who has done so much work in our school district for a number of years, but also on our school board to continue those efforts. He's just an amazing man, and we say congratulations to Don.
And I was there, too.
Oh, and that's right, you were there, and Ms. Fote, sorry about that. And I also had a chance to welcome Scacio, which is Southern California Association of Code Enforcement Officers here at City Hall throughout Riverside County. And I attended the other evening, the first meeting of the African-American Chamber of Commerce, it was held at Leon's Inn at the Ramada Inn, and it was an absolutely amazing turnout, amazing. So I certainly wish them the best, and to all the people coming in this weekend for White Party, want to welcome them, and we will be doing a ribbon cutting tomorrow, and certainly everyone who could attend, hope you can be there. I know, Jenny, you're leaving town, so I will do your regrets, as you have done for me this past week, and I thank you. And there was another fundraiser, the Desert Academy of Arts fundraiser, which was also an exceptional evening. You know, we just have so many fine events in the City of Palm Springs, and the art that was displayed was exceptional, and I have one of those pieces that was very similar that was on display there in the new office, so we'll talk about that in the near future. So those are just a few of the things that, tonight. And we will move on in our legislative agenda. Item number 16 has been pulled, and 17 also, is that correct? And we will move to item number 18, Sunrise Norte resale restrictions release, staff report, please.
Thank you, this measure is coming back to you, council, after several times before you previously, and I would ask John Raymond, Director of Community and Economic Development, to give the staff report. John, could you come to the microphone, please?
As Mr. Eddy said, this has been before you on a number of occasions, so I will spare you the history of Sunrise Norte and go right to what the city proposal and the staff recommendation is on the lease amendment. As we've discussed in the past, the city did appraise the property last fall. We obtained an appraised price per lot of $11,350 per lot, based on the Anderson and Brayman proposal, and so we're recommending that the lease be amended to allow the current property owners, or future property owners, and that is the owner of the improvements, to be able to purchase a lot at the appraised value. Based on the comments at the last meeting, the sales, that price will be frozen until July 1 of next year, 2005, so it gives them about a 15-month window under which to purchase at that price, at which point the city would then reappraise the remaining parcel and adjust the price. After that point, the lots would be reappraised every five years, and in the intervening time, they would, the price would go up annually by CPI. So in '05, it would be reappraised, and then it'd be CPI for five years, and then reappraised again in 2010 and 2015. Hopefully, by then, all of the lots would be sold off, but for anybody purchasing five years from now, or 10 years from now, that would be the process. For anyone not choosing to purchase, the council did, back in November, approve an amendment to the lease that goes out to the year 2064. It would give somebody out there right now 60 years, essentially 60 years on a lease, and it's adequate, will be adequate for another 25 years to be able to obtain 30-year financing. None of the other provisions in the lease were changed in November, except for the term, and that would be our recommendation, is that none of the provisions related to the lease terms, with the exception of the term, that would be just sort of reiterated in this lease amendment. One important thing in the resolution is that the, it says that the property shall be offered for sale to the owners of the improvements, which means only the owners of the property can buy. We have, since, sort of word is out there, based on the appraised value, we have received inquiries on the undeveloped lots, and people have also inquired about being able to buy the lots where the improvements are. And we don't want to be in a situation where the city is selling off lots to Joe Smith, real estate investor, who then is turning around and leasing people's land underneath them for whatever the market would bear. So it is kind of a captive, not captive, but kind of a closed system where you have to be the owner of the improvement to be able to buy the lot. And that is something that has arisen in the last couple of months, as people have become interested. So essentially, the lease amendment would create the ability to property owners to purchase their lots, and would decrease the regulatory burden on the part of the city. It's also, would be the first lease document to appear on the title, which both the city and the homeowner are in. If you remember in the history, the original lease was between the city and Frederick's Development, that was quitclaim, the Frederick's had leases with the individual property owners, and so this actually should clarify some of the confusion on the title. And then, for anyone purchasing the property, the city would then record a provision that would be a termination of, termination of resale restrictions. And so the resale restriction, which are, that say that the property owner can only sell for what they paid plus CPI, that goes away with the purchase of the lot. The final point I want to make is that there is a section in the staff report where we talked about the problem with the vesting, and there's a little chart in there that talks about the number of lots that were, when we pulled the titles, or pulled the lots up on MetroScan, where the city is not listed as a property owner, we've begun investigating that with First American, and so far, all of the ones they've pulled, the city is, in fact, the owner of the property. It doesn't appear to be a problem with the vesting of the title, it's a problem with the assessor, probably somebody in the assessor's office that are listing the owner of the property wrong, but that does not affect the ownership. And so we'll be working with the assessor's office on clarifying that and cleaning that up. So, again, in order for, in the future, for there to be less confusion about the leases. So what, the action before you tonight is a resolution, the lease, and approving the lease amendment in the form to be approved by the city attorney. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Raymond, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Raymond, the, so, the 25 lots in question in the staff report, really, there really doesn't appear to be a problem with ownership, it's only through documentation that seems to have caused a problem, but the, and the fact that you mentioned, even though the ones that listed, of these 25, there was a potential problem that we thought earlier, these people have still been paying their lease payment, as if-
That's correct.
They didn't have any thought in mind that was anything different.
They've come in for, you know, assignments, assignments of the lease, and, you know, there are four in the chart where it says Secretary HUD, that potentially, those potentially could have been foreclosures, and that could be, in fact, have been lost in a foreclosure to HUD. And where it says Frederick says lessee, that's not, it shows us as the owner, but it shows them as lessee of the property, and obviously, they quitclaimed all their interests in the lease, and we need to go back and have that cleared up. So there's some other types of problems on some of the lots, but generally speaking, our concern that we raised in the prior meeting, that there were six that appeared that they were sold off, it doesn't appear that that is, in fact, the case, that it's an error at the, not the recorder's office, but at the assessor's office.
Great. Your point of the vacant lots was a question I had written down here, too. What is the staff's recommendation, then, on the vacant lots?
Well, we've had a number of inquiries on the vacant lots. We'll probably do a short RFP for somebody to come in. I'm not sure if I want to recommend that somebody come in with, you know, additional manufactured housing, or if the lots go and somebody builds a, you know, buys a lot and then builds stick-built homes. You know, we haven't really looked at it to know what the appropriateness, they're not real big lots, they're 3,900 square feet to 4,300 square feet, so you're not going to get a, you know, 2,000-square-foot house on there, so.
But they are a lot of record.
They are a lot of record.
And if they purchase them, it is, be simple, then, no longer lease.
That would be correct.
What does that do to the appraised value? I mean, if you look at that cost, I'm curious, I mean, I'm to the point of, you know how many lots that, I mean, how many lots that we're talking about here, JR?
It was four, but one possibly could be a drainage basin, so it could be three. So it's three to four.
Is there potential to pull those, since there is no owner on those properties currently?
That's, well, we're in the, yeah.
That those three, pardon me, other than the city, that those three could be pulled out of this? I mean, they really don't qualify anyway, because they don't have an existing lessee. And maybe that's a question to ask of the city attorney, because what I'm looking at is not putting these, so we're going to have people coming in and, you know, making, I can see a substantial profit off of these, and maybe we'd be better off controlling them in a sense that maybe we want to work a situation, I think that's where you were going, that we want to make these affordable lots for a reason, for an affordable type of a project, to, again, maybe get to a housing goal in one way, shape, or another, you know, it's just a few lots. But if I understand what we're saying here, we're talking about the sale to existing residents, so that would not apply to those three lots or four lots, or whatever.
That's correct.
Okay, so those are not involved in this. I am certainly happy with the way this has worked out, and I know, as mentioned, it was mentioned earlier in public comments, we have, we've worked, and when I say "we", myself and Mr. McCullough a little bit, Mr. Oden a little bit, and staff a lot on this to get to where we are, and the city attorney as well. And I appreciate all the efforts. I think we're at something that, personally, I think works very well. I don't see how we can sell these lots ultimately for anything less than the appraised value, which was the $11,350, or whatever it was. Although, I would like to suggest that there are some improvements in that area that we had discussed with the neighborhood of picking up, and my thought would be, I think it was predominantly a wall. JR, is that what your recollection is?
Yeah, there is a wall, I think it's on the north side of the property.
Yeah, and my, pardon me, go ahead.
There's actually, you know, we're working on the Coyote Run expansion, and I have the ALTA survey and the title exceptions on Coyote Run, and there are some issues there that we need to resolve, that are Sunrise Norte properties for the Coyote Run project, so.
And my thought was that the funds that are generated from the first few sales, or how many it takes, of these properties, and I think there will be a few, be used to upgrade that area, solve those problems that we're, that we've talked about. I don't know what that number is, but probably two or three houses would take care of it.
That's probably correct. One of the things you might consider doing is Section 8 of the resolution, where it says use of proceeds, it says for development of new affordable housing, and we talked about earlier about CDPG, use of new housing, where sometimes it's kind of problematic, because you don't have enough to really facilitate that, you might want to add something in there about improvements to the area. It is adjacent to Coyote Run, and it would, that would qualify.
Could benefit both.
Could benefit both.
Right. Okay, good idea. Thank you.
Are there other comments? Yes, Ms. Fote?
I have a question. On, I know we are in a, there's a big differential between what the homeowner group wanted to pay for these lots and what we're saying is the appraised value. Just two questions. One, did we come up with these appraised values as raw land, or were they appraised that, from the point of the appraisal, did we ask that they be appraised as raw land, rather than already having improvements? I know the improvements are not included in the appraisal, but would this have been the same price for a raw land appraisal?
Well, the way the appraiser looked at, it would be a, I suppose, a finished, developable lot, not raw land. There's a difference between-
I mean, yeah, no, I mean, I mean a finished, developable.
So it's a, yeah, it would be as if you could sell the lot, and there were no house on it. Now, there was an analysis, because we had asked them to look at, you know, we had originally gone down this road, looking at what the fair market lease was. So the fair market value, fee value to sell the lot was just, you know, that was sort of the first step, and then in order to derive what a fair market lease was, because when we were originally going to recommend this, extending the lease and going to a fair market lease, and then doing all the things like eliminating resale restrictions. So there was an analysis of, you start with the fair market value of the lot as a lot, and then you, and then they looked at what the encumbrance of the lease did in terms of the leasehold value and the fee value of the property. And if you were to sell the lease today to, again, a party C, you know, a third-party investor encumbered by the current lease, actually, you would have to sell it for significantly less than the $11,000, because there's some value that's owned by the, by the, by the lessee. But if you are canceling the lease and you're just selling it, then it's as if it's, you know, a piece of raw land.
And then my second question is, out of the group of homeowners, how many do you think are going to be able to afford, or in an income level, will they be able to afford to buy their land, or have the intention to buy their land?
Actually, in the meetings that we had, you know, we were told that, by the residents that attended the meetings, and at any given meeting, we had, I think, four of them, you know, we had 18 or 19 people there, we were told, in some meetings, most of them will want to buy, and in other times, we were told a significant number are low-income and couldn't. Are most of them going to walk in and write a check for $11,000? Probably not, but people are refinancing, you know, we approve consents and assignments and all the time, and it's either on new sales or on refinancing. And if you go to refinance today, especially if you're getting advantage of a lower interest rate, and now you can have a 30-year term, they're going to pay less than a mortgage payment and own the land, and pay less than a monthly payment than they're paying now in a 20-year mortgage, and even with a $12 a month lease. So given that scenario, I'd say a significant number, probably 30 or 35 over the next couple of years, will buy, and I think there will be a residual number of people that probably never intend to buy, you know, unless they die and their heirs sell the property, but they'll stay in the lease as long as they're around. And, because the lease is a pretty good deal, it's a pretty low number, and so they'll be in that. So I think over the next two to three years, I think you'll see probably two-thirds of them sell, and then probably over five, somewhere between five and 10, all of them will be sold.
And so how will that work if someone does pass away and the heirs are going to sell the property that's on a lot that has not been purchased? Can they combine that, and would this, will the city cooperate in selling both the house and the land to another person?
Yes, because at that point, they'd be the owner of the property, or the estate would be the owner- would be the owner of the property.
But not, not the property, because I'm saying on a.
Well, owner of the, of the improvement, of the house.
Right.
And then if they, if they sold it to a buyer, then, and we, we think most of the ones that will, well, a number of the ones that'll sell will, will not be purchased by the current owner, but they'll be rolled into a sale, somebody coming in and buying the improvement and the lot at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
And then the ones that will buy, will buy through, through a refinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. I think it, I think it's, it's important to clarify why we're looking at this eleven-three-fifty sale price, and that we're, we had a, we had an appraisal done, as we all know, where it was determined that the fair market value for that piece of property to be sold was eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. For, for the city to do, for the city council to do, to sell that property for anything less than the appraised value constitutes a gift to public funds, which the council can't, cannot do. And it opens up several problems in, in other ways, and, and so I just, I think it's important to note that, and, and it's not that, it's not for any particular reason, it's not arbitrary, it's strictly based on what, what I feel, and I think what the, what the council feels that we have to do, and what our legal counsel feels we have to do. So I thought it was important to note that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
I would move the resolution and amend, what's that?
Section eight.
Section eight?
Eight.
Eight.
Use of proceeds.
To include the, that the, that the proceeds for the first sales go into upgrading the common property with Coyote Run, is that, am I saying that right, JR?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Which is the wall in question, which has been in question.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other observations, comments? Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it passes unanimously. I'd just like to thank the members of council who worked so diligently on this, Mr. McCullough and Mr. Mills, thank you very much.
Would you please thank Shirley Bush?
Oh, and Shirley Bush, thank you very much for all of your efforts over the past of, what, six, eight months, you've been working tirelessly on so many issues to help people in the community and the city, and we thank you. Item number nineteen, Palm Springs International Airport Use and Lease Agreement Staff Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the current airport use and lease agreements expire on June the thirtieth. What's before you is approval of the new form that we will ultimately have signed with the signatory airlines, and it will take us on through the next period of the lease agreements. We have, the airport director here, is here this evening to answer any specific questions, Richard Walsh, but with that, Mr. Mayor would recommend approval, thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walsh, would you please come forward? Our new director of our airport.
He's a good-looking guy, isn't he?
Mr. Mills.
I've been called.
I have, I have some concerns about the, the, the public hearings, the community meetings, not public hearings. Could you explain to me how they were publicized and how they were held? Because I have received a number of inquiries from citizens of the city who do not live in that small area that surrounds the airport, but who have definite noise problems. How, how did you determine how these community meetings were held and who was notified?
Sure, to take the latter part first. As far as what was required of us from the council, it was public information relative to the one provision of the lease and use agreement that relates to the elimination of the restriction of no departures or scheduled arrivals after ten PM or before seven AM. That went away as part of the new lease and use agreement. That's what we were required by council to hold public information meetings on. We held public information meetings in February and in March, one each, one during the day, one during the night. We had eight individuals at each show up, I'm not counting one, one individual showed up simply to welcome me to Palm Springs and signed off and left. The majority of the concerns related to sound insulation, and not specific to this, the lifting of this provision within the current lease and use permit. So that said, the area that you're, you're describing, and I believe, is what we, what we're calling the noise contour in and around the airport within the sixty-five CNEL. Those homes that are within that noise contour are eligible for sound insulation, our sound insulation program is currently in phase four. The next part of your question, I believe, was how, how we published the public information meetings.
No, my question was, then, the only meetings you held were for the people within that sound insulation area?
No, the public informations that we held were specific to the lifting of this provision within the current lease and use permit.
And who was noticed, and how was the notices?
Newspapers and via public information, via the city council meetings. And also, certain individuals were notified via mailings.
So it was a regular announcement that we place in the paper for notice?
Yes, it was, in fact, an ad.
How large, and I, the reason I'm asking is because I, there is a lot of concern out in the community still about this, and I feel very uncomfortable in, in how we noticed this, because I, I myself didn't know when those meetings were. And so I'm a little bit concerned that there's a lot of concern in the community by lifting this, and I don't know if this is legitimate concern or not, that planes are going to be flying in at two and three o'clock in the morning, or, or leaving at four and five o'clock in the morning, and I don't know how this affects, you know, how this is going to affect our quality of life, and I, as a council member, don't know that.
Sure, I think it's important to note that whether or not the lease and use agreement goes into effect, that noise restriction or that, that restriction goes away. So with the land, with the current use and lease agreement, it goes away if we do nothing and don't employ the lease and use agreement and set rates and charges by ordinance, that provision goes away. So either way, it's gone, as of June thirtieth.
I, I understand that, but I still don't know whether planes are going to be flying in at four o'clock in the morning, and that's, and I, and I think that's a concern of the community that may be an unwarranted concern.
Sure, sure.
I just don't feel like we did a good job as a city in publicizing these meetings and in, in making sure that the word got out to the community. Thank you.
At this point in time, do we have any flight schedule changes?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had checked in when these meetings were being done to, to, to see how the notification was being done, and it, and it was being done by mail to everyone that was in the, the sound insulation footprint, two-hundred-and-ten homes, or might be more than that, something along that line. And that was where my most concern, because those people are definitely the most affected based on the noise contour. I think, you know, everybody in the city, I mean, if you're really, if you're sitting and you listen for an airplane taking off, you can probably hear it at, at certain times of the day, and depending on how the, how the, how the wind's blowing. But, but I really think these people in this footprint area, which is why they were taken care of in the sound insulation project, or given the opportunity to be taken care of in the sound insulation project, were really the most affected, and certainly, I think, we did, and the airport staff, I think, did a very good job of making sure those people knew what was, what was happening here. So I, I personally feel that, that we did what we, what we needed to do, and I thought what, pretty much what we had instructed them to do, at least what I felt I had instructed them to do. So, and I'm amazed at the turnout, eight at each meeting, and if you compare that to prior to the sound insulation project, and I think Mr. Oden was probably on the council at the time, and his ears were burning during that period of time, it's.
Still burning.
Pretty amazing, and I think that is attributable to the way the airport staff has handled the noise problems from day one, and also to how very good that sound insulation project is and the, and the value that it has brought to the people with, within that footprint. So I, I am, my, my concerns are very much the same as Ms. Fote's about the restriction on the time, but it's something we don't have any control over, if I understand it correctly.
That's true.
So I, I certainly understand where you are. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We've talked a lot about the, the time restriction, is there anything else major that is different that we should be aware of from the previous lease agreement? And if there is, what impact would that have?
You have a, within the recommendation, a specific terms of agreement that are summarized before you, there is no significant issue short of the loss of that one provision.
Okay.
And when we add new flights and times, that information will come before us, anyway, we'd be alerted with memos.
Sometimes you even get that information before me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you, all right, council?
I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, that I, Mr. Mills doesn't live in the same area that I do, because I'm outside of the, the insulation area, as is the whole area by Sunrise and between Racket Club and, and Vista Chino, and I had to put Mr. Reddy on hold today as I was talking to him, because my whole house was vibrating, anyway.
Well, I live in that area also, and Mr. Mills doesn't live very far from me, and if you're outside, you can hear an airplane. And whenever I'm outside on the phone, I just have to say, "Hold on, until the plane flies over," you know, so, yeah. All right, council?
I'd move the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Pugnay. Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And item twenty has been withdrawn?
Yes.
So item twenty-one, city council meeting times municipal code amendment section
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as, as you directed us at a previous study session, what's before you is to change the hours of council meetings. It will start basically ostensibly a half hour earlier, the closed session will be at four-thirty, the regular sessions will be at six-thirty. That would be for both the study session and the regular session meetings. That's a report, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I mean, this is all about thirty minutes.
Yeah, I know. This is so bizarre.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think the real question, the issue, is how long should the closed session be? Originally, they've had historically hour and a half closed sessions. If we were to begin closed session at four-thirty, we start the meeting at six, if it's an hour and a half. I believe Mr. Mills felt strongly that two hours is needed as a minimum. You are the only other person who has extensive experience with, with these meeting times. I, I tend to think that whatever time is set aside will be filled, and I would prefer to see us go with an hour and a half closed session. That's quite a few hours, that's a minimum of six hours a month, and when we, sometimes we have any of the other meetings, and push for that six o'clock meeting starting time.
Well, I, I tend, I would agree with that statement. The only thing is, is that with, with all of the readjustments, we're looking at thirty minutes, and I don't know if it's worth it to put the community through all of that adjustment for thirty minutes. I just, I don't think it's worth it. Now, the thing is about, I, I would agree, I would think that an hour and a half should be sufficient for closed session, we had it at five-thirty, we've changed that over the years to, you know, depending on certain circumstances, we had more issues and we'd move it, and so that's always fluctuated somewhat, but we've not changed the meeting time, but we have looked at it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mills.
You know, it really, actually, we ended, this, the six-thirty was a compromise, because really, I, I was pushing for four and six, but, 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 you know, it is certainly not a, a major item to me, but I do think that the two hours for study session, we used to do an hour and a half, we didn't get much done, and two hours, we are getting close to nothing done. And it's, and, and, and we have items that are carrying over and carrying over and carrying over, and I mean, I, I would, you know, I would, I think we, we owe it to the community to do the two hours. If we get to where we're wasting a half hour in between meetings, then by all means, let's, let's change it.
All right, so.
But, and it doesn't make any difference to me if it stays five and seven, or.
Okay, let's, five and seven, it's what we have.
Except on days like today, when we have five-thirty and seven.
Well.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Clark.
Five and seven.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would make, I would say that I would ask that this item be withdrawn.
Are we officially now five and seven?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
We're five-thirty.
No, you are not, you are, five-thirty for closed session is your official starting time, your official for open is seven PM.
Okay, five and seven, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Go move.
Second.
And a second.
Can you wait just one?
We will wait for you, we'll talk among ourselves.
See, this is what breaks down at this point.
I think the city clerk owes us about thirty-one minutes now, and it's going on thirty-two.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we, if you want to start at five-thirty, no.
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock, five o'clock for your closed session, then why don't you just amend this, revise this resolution that you have before you and change its time from four-thirty to five PM? And then you don't need to do the ordinance, because the ordinance is just for your regular meetings, so then we could start the six-thirty open session, move that one to seven. So we could revise the resolution for five for close and seven for your others.
Okay, five and seven, okay. All right, we'll go work with you. Okay, we're, we're, the resolution to say five and seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that acceptable to the, to the motion and the second?
I think that's a perfect resolution.
All right. Okay. Roll call? That's, that's for the resolution ordinance? And yet...
Well, just for the resolution, but I need the motion and the second.
Okay.
You have it. Yep. Virginia.
Ms. Vogt made the, made the motion.
Oh, pardon me?
Yes, we already have it.
So, Ms. Vogt made the motion, and Mr. Mills made the second. Thank you. Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It passes for one. Okay, and we will move to item 22. Settlement Agreement and Lease Agreement Amendment, I'm sorry. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Knar, Finance Director, wrote the staff report, and he'll have some, some words to say, but first, I'd ask the city attorney to comment, because this was the subject of a lawsuit. Thank you.
Yes, we've been involved in a lengthy discussion over a period of about a year on this with the Alatis, who we leased the convention center site from. The, they had gone through an audit process, the current lease provided for the payment of percentage rent, and it turned out, we had a dispute over what was the percentage rent, how you calculated, and what items were subject to percentage rent. We had a number of things that the claim was, they should be subject to percentage rent, that we did not agree on. The Alatis' claim actually amounted to $1.1 million when first presented. Over the many months, we have worked out an arrangement. It involves the payment over the next two years of $550,000. A portion of that paying for the fees for the consultants that were employed by the Alatis in this process. The most important change is, we've changed the gross minimum annual rent. We've increased that amount to $1.2 million, and in exchange for increasing that minimum rent, we've eliminated the percentage rent calculation. In the process of that discussion, though, we have also made a number of other changes in the lease, which are substantial improvements. This document was originally negotiated in the mid-'80s, and had language which created, as we have worked with this lease through the years, created a number of problems. Staff report summarizes a number of those changes. One of the most important was that the city was required, when the Wyndham Hotel reached 72% occupancy, to build a hotel across the street on another parcel. That could have subjected the city to significant expense, given to what the hotel market might have been when that was triggered. Beyond that, we've removed language that requires us to go through the process with the BIA concerning approval of subleases, management catering agreements. We've also, we're doing the municipal financing tonight. We will not in the future have to go through the BIA process to get that approved. We've also deleted requirements, for example, for a rental bond, which involved significant expense. The, also, in going through, making physical changes in the site, we've clarified when it is we have to get BIA approval. It would only be if there was a 10% or more reduction in the area of the facility. If we were replacing things that were removed with an expansion, which we're doing now, you would not have to go through the BIA process. The, dealing with the BIA through the years has involved some significant processing time going through that process. We also dealt with arbitration, default provisions, and waiver of sovereign immunity. Had we ever really gotten into a dispute with the Alatis over the terms of this lease, those provisions would have presented us with very significant problems. Also, the process for the times where we do need to get secretary approval, that has been shortened in terms of what that process would be. So, I think when this originally started, and we were dealing with this claim, it certainly was a very uncomfortable situation, but I think, on the whole, by working with the Alatis, the BIA, who did want to get these financial provisions worked out, but then did understand these other problems with the lease, and worked with us very well to try and resolve those, I think actually, we have a much improved lease arrangement, which should serve us for many decades to come. Now, the last little comment I want to make is, we did, we are dealing in a situation with a, a number of Alatis, and we did want to be sure that we had over a 50% approval of this document before we presented it to you tonight. In the process of trying to get the document signed, and get it out to the Alatis, and deal with that, and then with some language changes that the attorneys were doing, even as late as Monday, we made some changes. I understood, as of around 4:00 today, that they, we do have signatures of over 50% of the Alatis now. In fact, I, I think we're up to 60%, 60 to 70%. We don't have written confirmation of that, in the sense that we have the signatures on a piece of paper that we've seen, but we've been assured that we have, that they have obtained signatures over the 50% limit. The BIA also wanted me to let you know that there's a provision that they want to change in the settlement agreement, the, the, part of the settlement agreement provides for payment to the, the accounting firm that the Alatis were using, and the BIA does not want to be, that to be a part of their obligation, their, that's between the Alatis and the accounting firm. So the BIA did not want to be involved in that. So, I need to have you approve it, subject to a couple of those minor changes, and then also the understanding that, we do understand that it has been now executed by a sufficient number. I just haven't seen the physical evidence of that, but I have no reason to doubt the emails that I have received, that we have attained that. If there was some problem, we'd certainly come back and tell you about it. So I would like the approval, subject to those caveats.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve the resolution with the minor adjustments outlined by the city attorney, and with the assumption that we currently have over 50% approval by the Alatis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, since this, this has to come, be continued to 4/14, for the contract, should that be a part of the, not, okay, all right, then, all right. So we have a motion, and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, and it passes unanimously.
And, and, Mr. Oden, I think it's also that we should thank the staff that worked on this item, and, and you, Mr. Oden, attended some meetings as well. And it was a difficult issue, and I think the resolution benefits all the players, so...
Definitely. Thank you, in particular. Okay, any additional legislative items? Ah, yes. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I made my comment basi-- okay. Item number 23, Convention Center Phase Two Expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The last companion request to the convention center asked Mr. Smoot, our project manager, to give you the details. It has to do with contracts that we did last week, and also, we will be asking to continue this item to next week, also, because there will be one additional contract to approve. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Reddy, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is really a housekeeping item, to go back to the original contracts, to clarify the condition, the same way you set the condition at your last meeting, to correspond with the first reading of the, of the bond ordinance, which has occurred this evening. And then, secondly, we would like you to take that action, and then continue this item to next week, because we will have the grading contract ready to award, and that's an important one. It's one of the first ones out of the box.
Okay, thank you for the staff report. Are there questions?
So, you're asking us to continue it, to approve it, and, and continue it? I don't think I've ever done that before. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to approve and continue this item.
For the con-- yes.
A second then.
And we have a second. That was my comment previously, but I was looking in the wrong place, yes. All right, roll call?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, and it passes unanimously. All right. Additional legislative items?
There are none.
Added starters?
There are none.
Reports and requests? Council reports or requests?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills?
Bless you. I, I would like to thank Mr. Bracken and Mr. Evans for their, their reports that I received on the retention areas. And I, Mr. Evans' suggestion of a general rule, I guess that's going to be like, like a policy that you're looking at now, of not to allow more than 40 to 50% of a front yard area, street frontage area, to be used for retention. I would, and I, I appreciate that. My, my thought is, is greater than that at this time, and I, I would, I would really like a review of the policy of the city for retention. Why did, why do we have it? When was it introduced? And the effects that it has, along with the, the fees that we pay for, for drainage. I have serious concerns, even with the 40 to 50% of the quality that our projects are, are suffering. And, and I truly believe it is, and if there's a public safety issue, then, you know, that certainly needs to be dealt with. I fully understand that. But I would like to be, I mean, I'd like to be involved in, in seeing where we're going with this. And I don't know if, if it's appropriate for me individually, or if it needs to be a, a subcommittee of the, of the council with two, to meet with staff and kind of review this, and see where we are, and how we got there. I would like to volunteer for that.
Okay.
But if you want, I'm happy to do it by myself, but someone else wants to join me, that's fine, too, so...
Is there anyone else interested in retention? Water.
I'm very concerned about that.
Water retention. Looks like you're, you're the only one who wants that, Chris.
Mr. City Manager, if we could set something up towards that end, I'd appreciate it. And then, also, we have, we have, our, our system of code enforcement that we have, I've been a longtime supporter of, if, if we're not going to enforce our codes, then let's don't have them. And timeliness is part of, of enforcement. And I, I looked around, talked around, to see how, how it's, how some other cities handle it, from a code enforcement standpoint. And what I understand, and I'm going to, I need to say exactly what it is, is a, is a different process than we have here, is called an administrative citation process. And it was very intriguing to, to me. It's definitely much more timely, and it's also less costly, and it, more importantly, it ultimately avoids the city attorney's office, which would lighten his load a little bit. And, and what it does is, it brings into effect our administrative board of appeals, which are always clamoring for something to do, anyway. And I think, if we could explore that process a, a little bit, I think it would, it would help us out, I think it would be more business friendly. I know people get frustrated when, when they, they obey the ordinance, and the guy next to them doesn't, and we get, we give him a ticket, or a citation, or what, what do we do, and no action happens. It takes months and months and months for something to happen. So I think there's potential here. At least it looked impressive to, to me. And if the city manager would, would check into that, I'd appreciate it. And I've got some information for you, if you'd like a place to start, so... Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pugnay?
Actually, two quick items. One, Mr. Reddy, perhaps next Wednesday, we could check schedules and look for a date to continue the visioning discussion that we've had, and set a date for that. And just second, I'd like to thank the city attorney for my report on Kewee Hills, so thank you.
Ms. Vogt?
Mr. Mayor, I, I noticed that we are currently enforcing the, and I think may, I don't know whether it's more than what we have been doing, the, the false alarm citations for, for people who have false alarms and, and are not licensed with their alarm systems. So I, I'd like to, to see some discussion about that on the agenda, that we maybe stress with the alarm companies, that they need to inform people, that they're putting alarms in, that they need a license, and maybe publicize that a little bit more. And then we have no way of, of judging when the police department actually goes out to a, a site, and so they mean, they don't leave a card, like, you know, Edison or something, "Sorry, we missed you," kind of thing, and all of a sudden, a homeowner, oh, pardon me? Who, who gets a, a, a bill in the mail for all these false alarm trips, had no way of knowing that the, either the police came, or that the false alarm wasn't canceled by the, the alarm company. So I, I'd like us to kind of look into that, and see what we can do to, to make something a little bit better for, and make people a little bit more aware that they need to, to have these alarms licensed. Thank you.
Well, I'm very pleased to hear some of the recommendations tonight, because they really come under what I've been talking about for a while, and that's neighborhood services. And you are absolutely right, though, there's definitely a connection to some of our boards and commissions, that they would really have more activities, which really makes it a much more business friendly environment. So thank you very much for those recommendations. There are no others? I, I would like an, an update also, on the changes in the, in the planning department, where we are in that process, what's been done, because, I don't know. Okay, so I would like an update. And we can move on to our boards and commission schedule interview dates and process. Our city clerk?
Well, before you, you have a memo that we prepared for you. You have 100-plus applicants, so we sort of did a figuring for you. What we need is direction on what do you want to do, how do you want to conduct the interviews, if, in the past, you've done it a variety of ways. All five members have interviewed all, all of the applicants at one, you know, where all five members are there. You've taken subcommittees, where the, in the past, the mayor and another member of the council took different commissions, and reviewed the applications, and then came back and made their recommendations to the council as a whole. One time, the council individually handled the applications themselves, and they called folks that they wanted to interview, or they set up appointments with them, that they wanted to interview. So you've done it in a variety of ways, and so what I'm looking for now is how you want to handle the applications that you have. You have enough applications to, for your appointments. I figured if you decide to interview each applicant for 10 minutes, and take a five-minute break between them, that would be a little over 27 hours. So depending on what you want to do, whether you want to do them all together, or if you want to do subcommittees, we just await your direction.
See, and we always start off... See, and we always start off with like the twenty-seven hours that ends up being forty, easily.
Yes.
But-
Falls under the category of be careful of what you wish for.
Oh, yes. First of all, have we ever had this many applications before that you know?
I really don't think so. And I think it was a combination of a couple of different things. And I would especially like to thank Ms. Vogt. I know she promoted this continuously. Because particularly here on the last about three weeks, many folks that came in and put in their applications said that she asked that they do it. So, I know that she made a special effort. But in the past, you've, a lot of times, had to continue the process to get applications in for your commissions. So, this is an extraordinary turnout.
Yes, this is a good thing, absolutely. The only way that I see that we can possibly accomplish this in the timeframe is if we do subcommittees. So that the council members would choose the areas that they want to interview. And if we have two people, then they would make their recommendations back to the council. For all of us to try to schedule the time individually, I mean collectively, to interview all these people, it would be cumbersome to say the least. Ms. Vogt?
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that we could maybe do a combination of that? Because I think there are some boards and commissions that I feel need the input from the entire council, such as the planning, and probably the airport, although I'm not so sure about the airport, the Human Rights Commission, those kinds of things. I think that maybe if we broke this list down and subcommittee some of them and did a full council review of some of the other ones that-
The challenge that we're going to face with that recommendation is that we also have, we're right into the time for budget. We know Wednesday is out. And that's going to mean, you know, three or four nights per week for the next five weeks.
And it's a Brown Act. It's a scheduled meeting.
Yeah, that's a scheduled meeting too.
And it's open staff.
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
During your suggestion, you're saying then the subcommittee would be making the recommendation? It would be sort of carte blanche, we'd be approving the recommendation? No?
No, it comes back for the vote, but you would make your recommendations.
Okay. Because I understand Ms. Vogt's concern as well, but certainly the time is the other issue.
I think also, what I felt, we did in the past, each board or commission we dealt with, we had the subcommittee-
And the chair, yes.
Right, I think that's very helpful. And the, but the way it's been looked at before, the recommendation comes from the subcommittee to the council, and the council would act on the recommendation, or modify it if however they would like, or redo it, which has happened before.
Yes. And this is a lot of work, and we don't have that much time. But whatever you want to do, I'm willing to work with. So, what is your recommendation?
This is just, we're just in agreement, we're not making motions.
Yes, at this point.
I certainly think the mayor's suggestion is a good one. And knowing that it comes back to the full body for action.
What would you suggest would come back to the full body? A short list or a list of all the applicants with an evaluation of each one?
You know, something that we had done in the past too, Ms. Vogt, was when we had, there were sometimes we had several for one specific board or commission. The council, in general, all five members shortlisted to a specific number. And that was a number that was interviewed by the subcommittee. That was the group that was interviewed by the subcommittee, based on the shortlist. Now, that's feasible too.
Yeah. And the thing is, we moved away from that because we had so many people who would apply year after year, and they never received an interview. So, the interview process, I believe, is very important. Since we have all these people who have applied, I think we need to interview them.
I agree. I agree, but I wouldn't-
But you can still shortlist after you've interviewed.
Well, can, could you then do some sort of a ranking, the same way as we did tonight with the CTBG grant? Where we got a report back on all of the grants. But we then had a list of, actually, what they did was shortlist.
Yes, and, yeah, exactly. But, you know, when you have nineteen applicants for three positions-
Two of which are incumbents.
Yes, two of which are incumbents. You know, that's going to be, and it's, I mean, if, how many are you talking about shortlisting to? I mean, I think what we'd really be looking for would be recommendations from the subcommittees.
And a recommendation could be, wow, you know, the subcommittee, there were five really outstanding folks, and-
And you take three of the five.
Right.
Yeah. But if we end up with ten from nineteen, that's going to be-
But it could be. Say it was the Planning Commission, the subcommittee come back and say, "There's just four that we find so stellar, we want you all to interview." Could that not be the leverage of the subcommittee?
That could be.
I mean, just as-
And I think, you know, since we are really looking at this process in a new way and with a new council, if that would be the recommendation, certainly, we can do that.
Of one of the subcommittees, perhaps, that might be.
Sure, sure. So, what we could do, I mean, in all honesty, if you wanted to do that, which could actually accommodate both recommendations, what we could do is that if we ended up with the shortlist, and we wanted to have a group interview, or one group, or one day of group interviewing, and interview the shortlist prior to coming here, we could do that. So, it would accomplish both. Yeah, because, yeah. Okay, do we want to do that? Okay, now, how do we want to go about the selection for the subcommittees? Do you want to choose? Or you want, oh, we could do that. We could do that.
Do what?
Put them in a hat and we draw. Could we do that and report that out? Because we can do that on our way out. Or do we want to do it now?
The selection needs to be at a meeting.
Okay. But I mean, couldn't we do it and report it out at the next meeting?
Well, I mean, no, you do-
The council members would know, and they could start preparing, along with the clerk?
I mean, we could do it now. Do you want, if you want to draw lots, if that's, is that one?
All right, let's do it now.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question also? We have those two commissions. One of them hasn't met since 1999. And the Administrative Appeals, and there's four applications with three openings on a commission that hasn't met since 1999.
Well, if we follow through with what we were talking about tonight with our Neighborhood Services, they're going to be busy. They'll probably be one of our busiest.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
As much as I normally, I mean, I appreciate the drawing out of a hat, my only hesitation towards that is based on the fact that, you know, I certainly think I have a little more expertise in the planning issue. The planning, and I would think I would serve the council better at looking at that position, and probably having some different insight than maybe some of you may have. And that's, and so, I mean, that's the, that's the one thing that I probably know and have expertise in compared to all of them. And maybe there are other people that have expertise as well in other ones.
I think that's a good suggestion. Let me add. Would that then mean that I would sit with each subcommittee person? Or could we have two members from council on a subcommittee?
You could do it any way you want, in terms of, because that's just a screening process. You know, ultimately, the mayor officially needs to nominate whoever the person is. But you could set up-
No, that's the way it used to be.
Not anymore, that was changed.
Well, I mean, the mayor, I mean, you can informally-
The mayor's nothing anymore.
Well- You can, you can-
I beg your pardon.
You can informally create the process that you want. But legally, the mayor is, has that position.
That he has to nominate?
In essence, that's what it amounts to.
I thought that was measure whatever, whatever, change that.
I think that was done by-
Oh, in the charter, right.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would really suggest that we stick with the drawing out of a hat, because I think that's a more fair way. That we have a lot of people who have applied here. And a lot of the feedback that we've gotten is they've applied, they've been denied before because they weren't part of the in-group or whatever. And I think that, you know, there's, I appreciate Mr. Mills's planning expertise, but I think that it's just fair, that it's just a nonpartisan way of dealing with this. Well, you get what you get, and it's, you look at it. I mean, we're not going to have expertise in all of these areas. And I think we're going to have to rely somewhat on staff and somewhat on our own, on our own research into what these are. And I think if you divide them up, there's two per, and we've got, I think, one left over. What are there, eleven? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Well, you're going to have more than one person on a subcommittee, so I think-
No, that's what I'm saying, two.
So, if a person, you know, I think even the drawing lots, if people just said the ones that they wanted, I mean, that's fine, that's not a big deal. And I think that that, if, even if it's an area of inclination, and I think that the thing, you know, the worry about the things from the past, we've got virtually a new council, so. And then, we also have the fact that council members can nominate. We used to only have one avenue. So, I think just inherently, the system itself is going to be more fair.
Mr. Mayor?
So, if people want to choose, I am fine with that. And rather than, than the drawing, I'd just rather have people working pretty much where they want to work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I would suggest that when we divvy this up, we not do it by commission, but by applications, so that everyone has a similar number of interviews, so that someone doesn't win the lottery and get Administrative Appeals, Personnel, Village Fest, and Rent.
Well, what we-
Someone else gets the ones with nineteen, sixteen, and sixteen, and eighteen.
What we can do, if we have people who are on two that have very high numbers, then the ones that have the fewer numbers, they'll have more commissions.
I think, yeah, there's, we need to have a balance on that.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to do planning, if possible. I'll, to do what Mr. McCullough is suggesting, I really couldn't fit in anywhere else, because I'm-
Well, why don't you hold off then for now, and we'll see whatever. Okay.
But see, Mr. Mayor, I think what you're going to find happen here is you're going to find more than two council members that want to be on the interview process for the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Well, then, if that's the case, then when they make their recommendation, that can be one of the areas where we do the council interview. So, we still have that covered.
Okay, well-
That's fine, I don't have any problem with that.
Then I would like to be on the planning.
Okay.
And planning and human rights for me, as priorities.
And human rights for me, too.
And Steve, you said, and planning? Mike?
I don't really have a preference, so if others do have others that they'd like to get on, I'd like to see them jump in and get the ones that they really are concerned about. I'll be, I like as a filler.
Okay.
I'll add another priority, parks and rec. So, if planning doesn't work out for me, that will be one of my backups.
If no one else wants parks and rec, I'd go on that with Steve.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to do airport. Excuse me, nineteen and seventeen. Happy to do it unless someone else wants to, or someone else could also.
All right, I'll do it. I'll take Historic Site. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd do that with you.
Who's doing that with you?
Chris, Administrative Appeals. Okay, we'll come back to that, Library.
I'll take Administrative Appeals.
Okay.
Public Arts, I would take, too.
Public Arts?
Jenny?
Yeah. Okay, anyone for Library?
Let me, I'm happy to do it.
I'll do Library.
Want to do all of them?
Okay, Mike? And I'll go on that with you, Mike. Personnel? All right, I'll go for Personnel. Anyone else?
Put me on that.
All right. Public Arts?
Mr. Mills, did you say Personnel also, or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Jenny, I'll go on Public Arts with you. Rent Review? All right, I'll take Rent Review. Anyone else?
I'll do that with you.
All right. And Village Fest?
I'll take that.
I will join Jenny on that.
Administrative Appeals is me.
Anyone on Administrative Appeals is me?
I'll go on with you. All right.
Yes, so, let's just run through that list one time to make sure I got everything.
Administrative Appeal, okay, go ahead.
Administrative Appeals would be McCullough and Oden, Airport, Mills, Oden, Historic Site, Oden, Mills, Human Rights, Pugnay, Vogt, Library, McCullough, Oden, Parks and Rec, McCullough, Pugnay, Personnel, Oden, Mills, Planning, Mills, Vogt, and Pugnay, Public Arts, Vogt, Oden, Rent, Oden, Mills, Village Fest, Vogt, and Pugnay.
I think on Planning, that will be Chris and Jenny. And Steve, we'll come back with that on the interview process.
The alternate.
All right, that's fine.
Or the alternate, yeah.
You know what, that's actually not a bad idea.
Yeah, 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 that's true. Okay, thanks, Mike. Historic Site, anyone? Human Rights?
Well, can we do, the problem for me here is that, if I'm looking at my, at these numbers correctly, the ones that we already have are, I'd like to see a breakdown of who has how many. Because if you're an alternate on something that has 19, and you already have 16, 18, and 17, that, you know, that's a bit overwhelming.
Well, that's not as bad as 110.
Perhaps you'll need alternates on the ones that have 10 or more.
Large numbers. I will, because I've got Human Rights, Parks and Rec, that's 28, Village Fest is 32, I will take the alternate on Historic Site.
Takes care of them.
Yeah.
Unless Parks and Rec may be...
Parks and Rec, they'll be okay. All right. Okay, so we will have to then get with our subcommittees and establish dates, so you'll be working on that.
Will you give us a list also?
Oh, and the chairs, yes, also.
Well, okay, so, let's take, okay, so we got the subcommittees now, so, I can get you the applications on Friday in your packet for each of the subcommittees. And then how do you want to set the dates for the interviews? Do you want to put aside dates now? Do you want to look at the applications, and then I'll schedule this for your next meeting, which would be April 21st, to schedule dates? Because what we have to do in my office, then, is we have to call the applicants and schedule the times.
Right.
So I need structured dates with times that you want to conduct the interviews.
Okay.
So...
So shouldn't, since we just paired up, shouldn't the council members talk to each other when they have their full schedules tomorrow, or as soon as they can, and then they can figure out the best way to then schedule with you?
However, I don't care, it doesn't matter to me, I just need to know what, you know...
It'd be hard to do it right now, I think.
Yeah, and then...
You do that report after her next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so Friday, I'll get you the applications to each of the subcommittees on who your applications are, and sometime between Friday and the next Friday, you'll let me know some dates and times.
Okay, you know, I guess we should ask the council now, do you want all of the applications? Do you want all the applications?
I would like to see all the applications for all the commissions.
I want only the applications for the ones for which I'm responsible.
Okay.
Okay, so, Ms. Fote, I'll get you all the applications, and then, and the rest of you just want your subcommittees, then, and if you're an alternate? Is that okay?
The reason that, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, having some of these people applied for several different commissions, I thought I understood you to say that.
That is correct. The, your, the rules that you set up in the past, the council set up, is you allow up to two, one person can apply for two different positions.
You know, what we could ask the clerk to do would be just to give us a list of names of applicants under each commission, and not the application, perhaps, and then we could see that.
Yeah, that works for me, I just wanted to not...
You're listing up the names of each one, and everyone wants that. Now, do you also want the subcommittees to get the applications, or do you just want the name?
You know what, what also might make it a little easier, because I don't know how many people who have applied for two. If we could know going into that process if they have a priority, and sometime, because I, having done this before, sometimes they have a priority, but the interview really reveals that they're better for one than the other, but at least having that information can be beneficial.
So then we would need to call the applicants to find out if they submitted to...
Only the ones who have more than one application in.
Okay, so...
And that shouldn't be a lot?
No, it wasn't a lot.
And then, I think what we're talking about is just a cover sheet with all the names of all the applicants for all the commissions, and then the individual subcommittees will get their own applications.
Yes.
Right, and so I'll try to have that in your Friday packets.
Okay.
Okay. And then you'll, then you'll contact my office with scheduled...
All right, we've got three minutes.
Contact my office with scheduled dates. Thank you.
Okay, Walker Star Subcommittee?
And I go, too.
Okay, so that would be Jenny Fode and I. Okay? And I will be serving. Desert Fashion Plaza Subcommittee?
I would like to be on that.
Okay, and we have two for that, Mills and Pugnay. And for receive and filing, Treasurer's Investment Report. Budget Task Force appointments, the Budget Task Force has made two recommendations of two names, Ralph Thornton and Jack Oberly. Ralph Thornton is a hotel executive, Jack Oberly is retired. Do we...
Mayor, previously for the original makeup, council each appointed a member. These were just two names that were suggested by Mr. Stiles. You can either accept them or adopt your own appointment.
Those names are fine with me.
And, Mr. Mayor, I do have another recommendation.
Okay.
And I'm going to butcher this name, but his name is Bijorn Alstrom, and he is currently the chairman of Volvo, and has a lot of financial experience, and has agreed, has volunteered.
So the three names? Are there any others? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, the names are Bijorn Alstrom, Ralph Thornton, and Jack Oberly. All in favor, I'd be known by saying I?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, it carries unanimously. Public reports or requests?
I got here a little late for the three-minute talk. My name's Joe Fosse, I live at 755 Spencer Drive. I've been here before, when you were the city council, and when Rob Parkins worked here and told me what he told me outside of this building with Chief Wagel, that I had to go through him to get police service or talk to him. You can give this to the mayor. I'm not going to pay this alarm permit, my alarms all go to the Sheriff's Department because of what Rob Parkins told me in front of Chief Wagel outside the door. If you want police service, you call me directly. After the grand jury hearing on our street about the house had been boarded up for 20 years, hadn't been anything done with it, grand jury heard it, it was fixed within a month. And the report on the grand jury hearing, I won't reveal right now, but its knowledge of what he was doing, which was very wrong. And he told me directly in front of Chief Wagel outside, if you want the police department, you call me directly, because of me calling because of all the problems there on Spencer Drive. You were city council when this happened, I've come every year, I'm not going to pay alarm services, my alarms all go to the Sheriff's Department now. No one has said anything to me about this, I've come every year, and I'm not going to pay it, still. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
What was that?
Staff reports or requests? All right, we will call this meeting adjourned. We have a joint meeting with the Awa Kaliente Band of Kewee Indians on April the 12th at 6:00 PM at the Spa Resort Hotel, preceded by a closed session at 4:30. Public hearing on the 14th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The next regular meeting will be April 21st at 7:00 PM, both preceded by a closed session at 5:00 PM. Thank you, and good night. And we will adjourn the hearing until next Wednesday, the 14th. And where's the closed session for, at the spa? Will we be there?
It's to be determined if maybe here or there.
Okay, thank you.